Good evening, I will call the May 2024 Board Meeting to order the First Order of Business. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is our spotlight on education, a little background story on this. In the fall, staff can fill out an application to do a mini grant. It's something that hasn't been done before. It would be new, innovative, directly benefiting kids. And the district would finance that endeavor. And the only promise ultimately beyond the receipt of the money is to do a presentation here in the month of May. So I'm not sure which order we're going in, if Becky's got that organized, or someone's gonna volunteer? Okay, alright. Kalina's saying she's first, so don't mess with her. Well, maybe so.
Hello, Amber Glaser, Jean Edwards, and Kalina O'Brien from the Intermediate School Special Education Team. In September slash October, our team put in a mini grant. Our team looked at our school student case loads and determined that a steamroller or a squeeze machine would be a great benefit to our students. We have many students who have sensory needs or have difficulty regulating their emotions.
Some children crave deep pressure, and the South Paw Autism Steamroller is a fun way to get it. It provides deep pressure input and assists with motor planning and processing. When our bodies are regulated, we're all ready to learn. Our students love the challenge of crawling between the rollers and being squeezed by the steamroller. Some comments by our students include, "It helps me to calm my body." "I like how it squeezes, and it feels like a hug." This autism squeeze machine is designed to provide the ideal heavy work that many kids with neurological processing disorders, such as sensory processing disorder and autism need. The double sweeper can accommodate a small child to an average-sized adult. The student crawls through or between the sets of rollers, just like being wrung through a clothes wringer. Pressure exerted can be varied by adjusting the tension on the spring. So if the kid's making more pressure, they can let us know when we can adjust that for them. Students are first taught to use the machine correctly and safely. We teach the rules, and each student who wishes to use it go through a step-by-step process the first time. One of our strict rules is that all students using the steamroller must be supervised at all times. The steamroller has several names, the squeeze machine, the hug machine. But they are all based on an invention by Temple Grandin, who is a 76-year-old woman on the autism spectrum. She has a PhD in the area of animal science and is an advocate for people with autism. As a child and an adult, she would become highly dysregulated from large crowds, noise, irregularities in her schedule and environment, and her difficulty in navigating the social world. She developed a squeeze machine to compress her body and provide her with deep pressure to help her calm her body. As a team, we are thankful to have this tool to offer our students who are benefiting from it. We continue to build our sensory tools to help students who need them. Our OT room is a great place for our students to also calm with crash pillows, a lycra swing, theraputy, and other sensory options. We also have some of these choices within our classrooms, such as weighted blankets, Play-Doh, soft music, and dim lighting, to name a few. Thank you.
Okay. The math stackers. Kindergarten.
We are not that prepared. But we do have pictures. We're part of the kindergarten team at Lean, and we did a PDH over the summer called the Elevate Conference. It's actually more than one PDH, it was 30 hours. And we came across this resource called math stackers. And we printed out the paper version, which our kids really liked. But we wanted the big foam blocks to go along with it. So we ordered these two things, we ordered the foam math stackers and the magnet bundle. Perfect. And so this is how they use them. You can see that the numbers are all, the blocks are the size of the number, if that makes sense. There's these little dashes on the side. So the four has four dashes, the five has five dashes. So they can literally put them together to equal nine. So then they can find the bigger ones to see what matches up. They can put an eight next to it and see that eight doesn't equal, put a nine next to it, see that that's equal, or put a 10 next to it, and see that that would be too big.
We do a lot of partner work in kindergarten, so it really helps them find partners of 10, partners of 9, whatever, in all the different ways that they can put those partners together.
Yeah, so like this here, you can see the little girl's counting the notches there. So she was even using them differently. She wasn't putting them up and figuring out which block matched up with them. She was just trying to figure out what 8 plus 8 equals, and then counted all the notches on the side to help her solve that. So there's lots of different ways to use them. This little girl wanted to figure out how to subtract using them. So she found a bigger block and a smaller block, and then found how many notches more were needed to get, or how many were missing here on that block. So, they really like them. They like them so much that they even use them at playtime. So it makes math fun, it makes learning fun, and they don't even realize that they're learning with them, so.
Yeah, hands-on is best with kindergarten. So we just like to look for lots of different ways to use hands-on materials to get the kids learning.
Yeah, and then part of the magnet bundle is we do not have magnetic whiteboards. But we kind of, we ordered these next year thinking that our new classrooms would have magnetic whiteboards. So then we also partnered with Donors Choose, and we ordered 30 magnetic whiteboards for each of the kids. And some other materials, some other math materials that we can use from this company as well.
Annie Brayton, Hammock Village.
Good evening, I'm Annie Brayton. And I'm the library media specialist at the elementary school and the intermediate school. And it has been a dream of mine to have hammocks at the intermediate school. We're so close to our beautiful forest, that I've always thought as the librarian it would be great to have hammocks there. So this year seemed like the perfect opportunity to fill out a mini grant to get hammocks. And I'm so thankful that we were granted the money to do that. As you can see, the hammocks in the school forest were easy to hang up, and the kids actually helped do the process. So it wasn't just me doing all the work. And we hung them up and we used them for reading. And my goal, my dream is that classes would check them out from the library, take their students out to the forest, and do a variety of things. Again, our forest and our campus is so beautiful, and this is just another way to use it. So they could read, of course, that would be my preference, but there's other things they could do. Journaling, writing, doing anything that you would do sitting in a chair can almost be done in the hammocks. The kids that I took out just recently were thrilled and overjoyed to be in the school forest and using the hammocks. They said they could just sit there all day and enjoy the hammocks, which is music to my ears. We purchased 20 with the mini grant, and I said they're available for checkout. So each hammock is in a bag like this, because it is a challenge to return a hammock to its original package. And I figured we did not want to do that to our kids. They would be in the squeeze machine. So they can check out the hammocks. These bags make it convenient to carry other things out into the forest as well. Our hammocks have water bottle holders, they're pretty fancy. Our end goal is that eventually we would like to build the actual village piece to it. So we've talked to Ryan Pease about putting the hammocks up on campus just out, before we go into the school forest. There's a little prairie area, which would be perfect when you don't have a ton of time to go out and do hammocks, but you want to take your kids out, it would be easier to hang them up just in the village piece. And I think that's the last slide. Yes. So having some shade on top and then allowing 20 hammocks to be hung up easily in the village would be just lovely. So thank you to the grant committee who awarded us the grant, and thank you to the school district for making it possible to have it.
Hi, everyone, I'm Catherine Sunderland, and I'm here representing the intermediate school music team. So in the past few years, we've gotten a lot of classroom instruments for the elementary school and the intermediate school. So when it came time to apply for the mini grant, I wanted to go outside the box a little bit. And then I got an email from Mr. Mike Schneider, you can see him in the pictures there. He's a polka performer, he's been performing polka around the state and even as far as Texas. I saw that on his website earlier, he's been performing for a long, long time. And his specialty focus is on engaging kids in polka. And we thought that was important because polka is a big part of Wisconsin's cultural tradition, and it's sort of falling out of fashion with the Gen Z and Gen Alpha. Is that the younger one? Yeah. And another part of his, another part of his presentation was also how polka and science interacted. Yes. So as you can see, there was a lot of student engagement. And in his presentation, he went through different science and music. There was one thing where he talked about how sound works, there was another part where he talked about how an accordion is built and made and how it makes sound. There was another part where he talked about how MIDI keyboards work, there was another part how he talked about doing radio shows. So there was a little bit of everything, and then he also had polka in between. So our last slide is a video where you're gonna see them doing the chicken dance, and he, well, you'll see.
... entered in a different way that our other games will. And if you go to the next one, we start to talk about the equipment here. What we purchased were six Nitro balls, and I believe when Andrea ordered them for us, we actually got them at a bigger discount. They were normally $60 a ball. It's double the size and about half the weight of a traditional volleyball, so it's great for training. The nets that we purchased, I think we purchased during them one of those Prime Sales on Amazon. It was amazing for us to get three of them. I think they're now closer up to $200 apiece, so we did save money in that respect, which got us more of the balls. Next slide, thanks. Right here, I just put together a little video I took when we first started. The conversation goes back to when Mr. Benson and I were talking about our budget to the start of the year. And the budget was already used up before I got hired this last summer. And I told him back then, I really love to bring Nitro ball to Amory School District. And he said, you know, apply for a mini grant when the school year started. And I did, and as you can see, should play somewhere, I believe. You're good for it, you can hit play, I can talk and be done. So Nitro ball is a volleyball at a pickleball leveled height net. We play the court of a volleyball court. The net does not reach the length of, or the width, I would say, of the court, so the kids kind of have to play with the rules there. But essentially, it's volleyball upside down. It's volleyball where I have to hit the ball into the ground, we get three hits on each side, and you're using those skills of bump set and spike. We love, where we would like to do this after our volleyball unit, so that the kids already have the fundamental knowledge of how to do it. But now they get it in a modified version so that they find more success. We find that our better volleyball players, they find more challenge in including the others, because it is not more of a spike and dominate, it is more of a spike and retreat. It is very much so a retreat and advance type game where the kids have a bunch of different ways to express themselves through the game of Nitro ball and not volleyball. So, that might be my last one, so, thank you.
Last and smallest. So, a few years ago, in, a few years ago in some of my math classes, I started doing some Makerspace activities at the end of the week. I have some electric circuits kits, some bridge kits. And what I did this year, in part because in teaching astronomy, I got the idea that I wanted the kids to build remote control rovers, because we talk about that a lot, especially with Mars, all the rovers and, and remote control exploration of the solar system. We talk about time delays and things like that. I bought these little bits with the grant money, I already had some of them. And what they are basically, and some of you maybe have seen these before, they're small electric circuits. They are, you have outputs, like this is a digital meter, it can count, it can read out a temperature or a distance, because you can hook it up to a motion sensor or temperature sensor or something like that. This is an input, they're color-coded, so they, you know, there's boxes for each ones that the kids can go in, depending on what kind of problem they're trying to solve. This is a little tiny keyboard, but you can hook it up to kind of a whole Mini Synth kit, and you can make some pretty big sounds. You know, there are speakers that come with it. I had a student the other day that he was making kind of like horror movie sounds with it. It sounded pretty good, almost like Jurassic Park that he was able to generate. But you can play all the octaves on a normal keyboard with that. There are control bits, like receivers and transmitters, to make something remote control. So the kids built, that car is not remote controlled, and the problem was, alright, now make it remote controlled. And you can see on the picture that, you know, you can decide, do you want a motor on each engine? Are you going to, or on each wheel, or do you want to power each wheel? And if you don't, you know, how are you gonna split it up? You can attach a motion sensor and have it not bump into walls, or even back out of something that's too hot, or it'll light up some light bits if, you know, if it senses that it's too dark, things like that. So it's basically something to add to some things we already have, but in a very different way. Because these are, you know, the electric circuits you're gonna find when we do those, just some basic principles of electronics. But these, you can actually kind of have a finished device and then kind of troubleshoot it and make it do what you want. So, that was mine, thanks.
Okay, thank you to all mini grant presenters. We'll begin the process again in the fall. For those who are regular board meeting attenders, you probably understand this meeting is a little bit different in that we operate at the beginning without a president, in that we just had an election, and we have to reorganize the board, so that's what we're gonna embark upon here in a moment. So to reorganize a board, we need to first get a president in place. So at this time, I'm going to take nominations for a school board president.
I would nominate Shar Glenn for the position of school board president.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? And one last time, any other nominations? Do we have a second for the motion to have Shar as school board president? Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, Shar, I'm gonna pass the baton over to you, and you can get the rest of us in place.
Alright, well, thank you, I think, and what's going on? The next office that we would need a nomination for would be vice president.
I would nominate Steve Osro for vice president.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Steve Osro for vice president? Gwen, is there a second?
Second.
Gail? Alright, and so, all those in favor of closing nominations and casting unanimous ballot for Steve Osro as vice president, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes, Steve, you are now the vice president. Next office would be the clerk. Is there a nomination for a clerk?
I nominate Dale Johnson.
Dale seems to like that position? Are there any other? Next month, he can go back to his corner if this passes. Are there any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for clerk? Do I have a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Dale Johnson for clerk? Steve, is there a second? Joe? All those in favor of closing nominations and casting unanimous ballot for Dale Johnson for clerk, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes, Dale, congratulations, you're the clerk for the 22nd year in a row.
No, no, it's about year three or so.
And I'll take a nomination for treasurer.
I nominate Joe Vierkant.
Any other nominations for treasurer? Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Do I have a motion to close nominations for treasurer and to cast unanimous ballot for Joe Vierkant for treasurer? Gwen? Is there a second? Dale? All those in favor of closing nominations and casting unanimous ballot for Joe Vierkant for treasurer, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Okay, Joe, you're back at treasurer. You get to read that big, that big thing here in a couple months. And the last position would be director, and Gwen's the only one left, so would there be a nomination? Nominates Gwen for director. Any other nominations? There can't be, no other nominations, there still can't be. So do I have a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Gwen as director?
I'll make that motion.
Dale, is there a second? Joe? All those in favor of closing nominations and casting unanimous ballot for Gwen Dato as director, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Alright, Gwen, you're the director. Alright, that is all there is. The next then is the meeting dates for 2024, 2025. Gosh, that's even hard to say, a school year. And so basically, we just take a look at this, and I think we're following the same Monday schedule, so.
Yeah, Becky and I looked at it, we had to dance around some certain holidays and spring breaks and such, but it's generally the same Mondays of the month throughout the course of the year.
Is there a motion to approve the meeting dates?
I'll make that motion.
Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding the regular meeting dates for the 2024, 2025 Amory Board of Education meeting? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the meeting dates signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, signify by saying no. Alright, motion passes, the meeting dates are approved. Next item of business is the designation of district depositories. So these would be our banks that we would use and our companies that we would use for the year.
There's no changes from last year to this year.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the designation of district depositories?
I'm making a motion.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Gwen, is there any discussion on school official depositories? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of designated the school depositories, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion passes, the depositories are approved. Next up, we have the appointment of WASBE and CISA 11 delegates. Who is our CISA delegate with Steve? Anybody interested in that role? I think, do we have to?
Do I nominate Steve again? Unless somebody else wants it, I'm happy to do it, but.
Steve's happy to do that, it was good?
It's fine. I think Steve's good at it. Just because I'm the one that shows up, right?
Whatever it takes. So Joe, I'll take a motion from you to appoint Steve as the CISA 11 and WASBE delegate. Dale, you seconded that?
I'll second that, yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Steve the WASBE and CISA 11 delegate for the year, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Steve, congratulations, you got yourself another, another job for the year. Okay, next would be the authorization for use of Weld Riley for legal services for the district.
I'll make that motion.
Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Gwen, is there any discussion using Weld Riley for legal services for the district?
Have we looked anywhere else?
We have not put it out for bid, no.
Are we charged, or have we charged per year, are we charged per hour?
Well, the billing is by time of interaction with them, or hours worked by them. And that billing then comes either monthly, or every two months, or every three months, depending on the bill. But no, we haven't, we haven't put it out to bid for other legal services. We've been with Weld Riley since I've been here, I'm not sure how much longer before that.
There's no quote, like, retainer fee necessarily, it's just purely by the hour, correct?
Correct.
Is there anyone else locally in the area who does school education?
School law in Amory, not that I'm aware of.
I also would caution using anybody extremely local for legal services for a district in a small town, just because of personnel issues and things like that. I think there would be conflicts of interest that way. I'm not saying that necessarily Weld Riley has to be the way to go, but I would, I would be concerned, I would have concerns about local people.
What did we pay for total last year, do you know, Jonathan or Dr. Drifler? Sorry, I should have set you up for this, I did not.
I remember, right, we, I mean, years ago, we did look at some other options, I shouldn't say options, exploring the possibility of somebody else, and I think everybody in Northwest Wisconsin uses Weld Riley. It's what they do, you know? Legal services for, for schools and, so.
We do this every year.
We do this every year, yes.
Just waiting on the internet.
Okay.
I guess, I mean, I guess that's just the thing, I just wondered if there's anyone else, obviously, and if we were gonna do a bid for government. You know, obviously, I would like to see a minimum of three bids or whatnot, and, but I guess if there's no one else in the area, I don't know.
Yeah, I think somebody that's well-versed in school law would be beneficial. Just we face a different set of challenges and issues, I think, as a school district than. challenges and issues, I think, as a school district than normal businesses or individuals would. Um, it's certainly something that could be explored through the year this year, um, if we feel that the price range is not within our liking or to have bids put out there, I don't know that we would get three to to bid, but we could try. We could, you know, we could certainly approve it this year, um, and then look through the, throughout the year this year and be prepared for this when we come back at the table next year.
Yes, is, is that something where people, again, if I was an attorney in the future, if, is it something that's out there for bid?
I'm not sure I follow.
Okay, is there, is there
It could be put out for bid.
Sure, anything could be put out for bid, you can make the authorization to use anybody for legal services, it's a matter of what you choose to do. I'm not sure who there is that works the world of not just of uh, education law, but also employment law, that's sort of a niche. But there are others that I've seen that do that work, just no one like in this immediate area. And what I refer to as area, Weld Riley is based out of Eau Claire with other satellite offices, I guess that's sorta local, but there are others.
Like in our CISA, well, I mean, does everyone use Weld Riley?
I couldn't say that everyone does, but I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of other district administrators, and Weld Riley is typically the words that they use. I would say at least three quarters.
Could we ask for CISA surveying?
I'm not sure that they would be forthcoming in sharing that information, I don't know if they would or wouldn't, I'm not sure if that, that's a proper request to make of them. I, 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 I just decided to think about that, and I, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem sharing who we use.
Yeah.
But I don't know if other districts would have a problem with that.
It's certainly worth checking into if there's somebody that um, specializes in this and then would be local enough, obviously, when we need them to come up for expulsion hearings and things like that, that kind of nature that we have them come up for, they would have to be within range to do that, so that we're not paying somebody from Madison to come up here five hours of travel time and back.
Yeah, and I'm talking apples to apples too, obviously, you pay, you know, in world of law, you pay more for usually better attorneys.
Sometimes it's one of those, you get what you pay for circumstances, yeah.
Thank you, I, th- those are really the questions I had as well.
And I, I would say our five-year running average is right around ninety-five hundred.
Okay.
So, that's just kinda looking at the previous five fiscal years, about ninety-five hundred would be the average for the year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, so there is a motion um, made by Dale and seconded by Gwen to use Weld Riley and approve them for our legal services this year. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of using Weld Riley for legal services through the year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes, we will use Weld Riley this year and explore a possibility of looking at uh, rates for the future use for discussion next year. Uh, next would be the authorization for use of an independent hearing officer for expulsion hearings held in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and hopefully we won't have any of those. Um, I believe we use Weld Riley for that.
Yes.
Is there a motion to use Weld Riley for um, as an independent hearing officer for expulsion hearings that may occur in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
Is this, is this a motion to use Weld Riley, or is this a motion just to have an independent?
They would do one in the same
It's, well, I, it's a motion to use an independent hearing office, officer for an expulsion hearing, you don't have to. And who we've used is Weld Riley.
Okay.
It, I mean, to, to use, to do an expulsion hearing without an independent hearing officer would be dangerous at best. This is a lot of statutory compliance.
I just wanted to make sure that we state the motion the way it should be, so
Sure.
The way it's presented here is that we would use an independent hearing officer.
That is correct.
And I would make the motion that we do that.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Dale? Any discussion to use, for the use of an independent hearing officer for expulsion hearings?
I guess since I'm not first in this, is it the same thing as an impartial hearing officer, or different?
Independent, impartial, yes.
It's this, it's interchangeable phrase, but again, you don't have to use an independent hearing officer, it simply is best practice to make sure you're in the guardrail, so to speak, and I think it's interchangeable. I think what you're saying is interchangeable.
Well, yes, I was just looking at in the future here, a grievance process, and it says impartial, is it the same person, or roughly, or like a
I think in the grievance process, it's different, um, 'cause sometimes the board is included in that grievance process. Um, and that's why we don't get to know a lot of appointment things or, like all of the details, or even um, if we have to come into an expulsion hearing, we don't know any of the um, play, things that have taken place before that, because we have to remain impartial. So, those are kinda different things, so this was an independent hearing officer, they are impartial, but I don't, I'm not sure that it would be the same as what you're looking at in the grievance policy.
Okay.
Just two different languages.
Thanks, I'm ready.
Okay. All those in favor of using an independent hearing officer for expulsion hearings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes, we'll use an independent hearing officer for any expulsion hearings that may occur. And now, on to board appointed committees for twenty twenty-three, oh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and we do have the information for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in front of us.
Yep, this is where we're at right now, we have functioned with two building and grounds committee members, Joe is one of those two, Keith Anderson was the other, we can't function with, we can do with one, it, it's not a game changer, but we have been using two, and right now, it makes, makes sense to have two, because we got a lot going on. So, if you wanna do two, it would be up to all of you to decide who that would be.
Wanna do it again? I enjoy it. It'll go.
I think we should have another board member.
Yeah, I think two would be a good idea. I would love to do it.
I think you would be a
And that might make, sorry, that might make sense, 'cause there is a committee on here that we've sort of established in the, in, over the course of the recent year, which is the School Farm Committee, and that constitutes all, Building Principal Josh Ghoul, Paula Johnson's on there, myself, John, a few staff, and the board members that have been on there are Shar and Keith. Um, it's an active committee, we've got a lot going on across the street. Um, so if you wanted to do building and grounds, perhaps you wanted to do school farm, if you know anything about farming. Just checking.
Last time I checked.
Okay, just checking.
You've heard of it.
I've heard of it.
That's not what Brick says, but okay. Alright, Steve, would you like to be added to the Building and Grounds Committee?
Sure.
Sounds good. Um, we're gonna, this is appointed, so I don't believe that we need a vote to do this, so Steve, you are now appointed to the Building and Grounds Committee.
With Joe.
With Joe, yep. Joe will remain, and then uh, Community Education Advisory Committee, Dale, you're still there.
I'll be fine.
Good with that? Uh, there's the Curriculum Oversight Committee, Joe is currently serving there. Um, and I don't think we've had more than one board member there prior to, so
It's been one.
I think it, that would be able to stay that way, the Human Growth and Development Committee, that's myself. Um, and then I see the Technology Committee and Outdoor Committee, Steve is on both of those. Um, which by our bylaws, you can only be on two, no more than two, so you'll have to relinquish one of those.
Which one do you want?
I would do outdoor ed.
So I figured, yep.
It seems to make good sense.
Yep, absolutely.
Alright, Gwen, you're appointed to the Outdoor Education Committee uh, in Steve's place, and then Steve will remain on the Technology Committee. And uh, that being said then, with those appointments then, is there a motion to approve the board appointed committees?
The only question I have is, is if the, if your farm committee is big and ongoing, is there a reason why that isn't listed here?
It's simply 'cause it hasn't really, really gotten rolling until this last year.
Okay.
We were spinning our wheels for the longest time to get where we're going, and now we're starting to really pick up speed.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's on a standing committee, so that's kind of a, um, it's an ad hoc kind of committee, so it would be a different um, appointment for her, like, it's, it was voluntarily that Steve and I served, or that Keith and I served on those, on that committee. Um, but it can be disbanded anytime, it's not a, it's not a standing committee. Is there a, a motion to approve the board, the board appointed advisory committees?
I would make that motion.
Steve? Second?
I'll second it.
Joe? All those in favor of approving the uh, board appointed advisory committees for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes, board appointed advisory committees uh, as we done. Moving along, the consent agenda items. Um, there was uh, some issues with the minutes, you might not have found all of those in there, those will be updated um, in the next board book, the next, uh, prior to the next board meeting, we wanna make sure that everybody has a chance to view those uh, in their entirety, the way that they're supposed to be. Um, Steve, I believe you had vouchers this month?
Yeah, I reviewed the vouchers and found everything to be in order, so I would make a motion we accept the consent agenda items, minus the minutes, right?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Joe? Any discussion to approving the consent agenda items? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, consent agenda items are approved. Um, and then do we wanna
I'm not sure how you all in, in the administrators feel about the following suggestion. We've got some substantive presentations this evening, it might take up some time. I'm not sure if we want to go in lieu of the administrative reports and them highlight certain items, or to do them in full, it's up to you guys, I'm just putting it out there.
I yield my time to the guest.
That's very diplomatic of you, Josh. Tom is smiling, I'm sure that's a yes, Jessica. Okay. If that's okay with you, you guys are in charge.
I believe everyone's calls to the end of the school year, am I correct?
Awesome, okay, well, thank you for yielding your time and moving along, and we've, we've viewed all of those things, and they all look like they're wonderful things happening to the end of the year, and everybody's excited, so thanks for that work.
Well, the two presentations that we have in the room are the Guaranteed Maximum Price with Gary Ziffco and Troy Miller, and Lead Home Insurance. And I think the commute home is probably further for these two than it is for the lead homes, 'cause from here to the golf course isn't but five minutes, so if it's okay with you, we can move up the Guaranteed Maximum Price with Gary and Troy.
Okay, for the board?
Yeah.
Move these up, alright.
Okay, you're up, gentlemen.
You're up.
Well, you see on the screen is the present schematic of what we're choosing to do.
Yes, I'll, I'll just go quickly here, I hope, um, so we, we put the, the project out to bid last month, um, we're here tonight um, to present to Sean the GMP, and that GMP amount is four million, seven hundred thousand, seven, seven, or seven hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight. Um, so, under um, kinda where we wanted to be, this was phase one, phase two, we were calling it. Um, basically, everything uh, south of
What's the name of this drive? Warrior Way.
Warrior, really south of Warrior Way, so, in addition, onto the north parking lot of the high school, new track, um, new football soccer fields, relocating the bleachers, um, from the existing field over here, relocating the press, the press box from both football and baseball, the baseball will go to the new J, or varsity baseball field. The press box will go to the new location. Um, there's throwing, the track and field throwing events are on the um, east side, and then the these are turf fields, the varsity and the football. Uh, JV baseball is a um, grass field. And then the Jorgensen will be a refurbish of the Jorgensen Fields, um, new uh, new grass, new egg lime, new fencing. Uh, site lighting or athletic field lighting at the football field, the varsity baseball in uh, Jorgensen, um, varsity softball field. So with, with that, we're feeling pretty good about where, where we're at, um, we started today, so
We did.
We had a little bit of dirt being moved, so um, anticipation schedule wise is to have the football field ready for football, so we're
August twenty-third.
We're going fast and furious out there to get that done, and then the baseball fields would, would come in the fall, um, as we finish those up, so
It definitely escalated quickly out there.
Yes.
It's a lot of dirt.
Can you remind me, when, when does the track, does it go in well after the football field?
No, the track, the track, the actual track surface, the asphalt will be, will go down in July. Um, but it has to sit for, for about thirty days before you can put the, the actual surface on it, um, so that'll happen, we'll, we'll, we'll finesse that in sometime um, during football season, and, and then uh, yeah, then it'll be ready for, for track in the, in the spring.
Uh, getting on to the football field with the track there, it, will that all be okay?
Yep.
Walk on and everything to get there, and, okay.
Yep, yep, we'll, we'll probably put like some temporary, like plywood and matstone, just to traverse across there with the with the kids, just to add a protection, but
So, every board member and every administrator has to stand out there and make sure that that's the only way onto the track? On the football field?
There will be fencing, though, you know, there's uh, a lot of new fencing going up as well, so that'll, that'll kind of direct traffic.
It looks uh, it's gonna look fantastic, I think.
Four, four point seven without the roadway?
The road is not part of this picture, the reason that the road is not part of, the road out of the south of campus, the reason it's not part of the picture is to to get across the ravine that is to the south of campus is just too cost intensive, that's a big piece of land, big space, and further, we don't own the land. That's SMC's land next to Jorgensen Field to the east of that, that's not our land, so that you can't run a road across someone that's not our land.
Yeah, so we're kinda re, we're, we're asphalt in this with a little turnaround bulb on it, um, yeah.
Did we have another option instead of going across SMC land?
Well, the other option would be, once you hit that, what is, in essence, that straight line from east west out to Minneapolis,
Mm-hmm.
You could head west, and when you get to the line that goes to the south, just before you get to the fields, you could do that, you could square it off. My education in referendum and work and so forth is uh, corners cost more.
Yeah, it was, this, this became a big expense to
Yes.
maneuver around that, or to fill that in, and to de, and timeline as well to, to
And it would also delay things greatly, from what I understand, you have to get a lot of approvals to head across that ravine
Yep.
from the state.
Yeah, so where, where we're currently at, we're, we're outside of that
The, is the DNR safe, you know, we're in the, the good, the good part, and when you start getting into ravines and wetland delineation, that kinda slows things a bit while they determine what's allowed and what's not.
So is it still ongoing discussions for the future, or is it just completely off the table?
It's off the table for phase one.
Sure.
It can always be done at some point in the future. What's also not happening, if you go to the top of the screen, Becky, the soccer fields that are just, those are placeholders, that's not happening in phase one. Uh, it's simply what a future rendering may look like, and, and frankly, that could be very different than that, the, the fields could run east west or not be soccer fields at all. I mean, that would be up to future generations of the board to decide what's gonna happen there. Pickleball is in the rising sport, that's true, but, yes. So maybe, John, you could speak to total number of dollars available for a project in regards to interest earned and referendum contingency and how that plays in, 'cause the total price take of all things included is not four point seven, maybe you could explain that to our
Yeah, correct, so there are um, there are scopes of work that was, that were earmarked in the original referendum, like new lighting, the upgrade, the, the football field lighting, um, new fencing on the, on the campus, um, new pavement, new asphalt pavement on the campus. Um, some new siding and just refurbishing of the existing buildings, so, so that is still in the, the referendum bucket. Um, so we're well over a million under budget on the high school, and then also there's interest earnings, so we're so our, like I said, our GMP is four point seven for, for this work, there'll be some change order work that we've already, you said, a co, um, had in the budget. There's also work that George is, is doing outside of Kraus Anderson. Just knowing that there's better value, sometimes there's be, better value in, in uh, in George doing it, so we're, we're, we're going there with some stuff, some of the outbuildings, um, the storage buildings, the ticket booth, the future pavilion, um, restrooms, uh, so George is, George is gonna handle that scope of work.
So, the money available, John?
Yeah, so there's actually three different buckets, um, we have the five million dollar borrow, which you guys authorized back in January, February. Um, so that's more or less the GMP that we're talking about today is the five million dollars. The rest of it comes across in the Kraus Anderson side of things as a change order request, because because there's the second bucket, which is the million dollars contingency money. So that's outside, that's already in a GMP, so it can't be placed into another secondary GMP without reducing the first GMP. So that will come across as, correct, that's accurate to say? So, that'll come across as a change order. The third bucket, which is a, a great bucket, is the referendum proceed interest earned. So we are increasingly, because Kraus-Anderson is great in dragging their feet on draw schedule, we have been able to invest and reinvest and reinvest and reinvest. So we are about to cross our threshold prior to the end of the project. We will be crossing what's called our arbitration threshold, which is the maximum amount that we are possibly able to earn in interest before we have to start dumping it back just directly to the IRS, which is two point four roughly million dollars. So, between the three pools of money, we're looking at it in availability of eight point four million dollars total that we have accessible, that is all part of either referendum contingency, the five million dollar borrow or, and the interest earned. And like I had spoken to in the past, it has to fit in the scope. If we're gonna use interest earned, it has to fit in the scope of the existing referendum, which this does. With the contingency money, it also has to fit within the scope, which this does. The five million dollars is specific to athletics, so that money has to be spent just for that. And please, if you have any questions, let me know.
Four point seven was a good, good price.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we, we had good bids. Yeah, we're, we're feeling happy, we're all lined, it's gonna be, it's gonna be great when it's finished, it's gonna be...
It's a lot of work for that, for the four point seven million. That's a lot of bang for the buck.
Yeah.
In my opinion there, with two turf fields and lighting and it seems like a lot of bang for the buck.
Can I ask the question of how much would the road cost if we were to go through?
It was in excess of a million dollars for the road and that's where we kind of, knowing that that was probably lower on the priority list, that kind of got abandoned as we got into the initial price.
I think it boiled down to rotor lights at all fields. I think that's really what it boiled down to.
Yeah.
Because the lights are approximately the same.
Yep.
So that's really one or the other.
And as Sean was saying, it's, it's not, it's not a done deal, it can't, it can't ever happen. You know, you could come and skirt, skirt your property without ever going out to the next. It's just filling in that ravine and, and to do that is a, a next step with the designers and the DNR. So I mean, like I said, it's not that it can't be done, it's just...
And we wanted to avoid a straight out east-west all the way up to Minneapolis because of foot traffic at softball. I mean, there's a lot of kids in and out and running to get a follow ball or whatever it is. Just want to keep kids and so forth and people away from cars.
Yeah, I think...
Was that watershed issues for DNR or...
Yeah.
I think that, you know, we're talking about safety issues there at soft, at softball and things like that and obviously gotta worry about those things. That season's pretty small, that road can be used year-round, which is a bigger trade-off to me than the concerns that we have there. What I think, you know, even to have the DNR issues there and stuff, I think it can be addressed and I think it needs to be addressed at some point to, for accessibility in and off campus. That was a, a big draw for this. But I understand right now that it wasn't a priority one with the DNR hurdles that have to be jumped and if we want to get construction going on that, I would hate to see that delayed because of that road. But I think it should be on the board's mind to prioritize that road sooner rather than later. It's not gonna get any cheaper.
So when prepared, what you would be voting on is this is the document for the guaranteed maximum price. You're giving me authorization to put my name on the dotted line stating, "We agree to the guaranteed maximum price."
I would make that motion and we move forward with that.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Glenn, is there any discussion moving forward with the guaranteed maximum of price of four point seven roughly million dollars for the athletic complex? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All of those in favor of authorizing the go-ahead for the guaranteed maximum price of four point seven million dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion pass.
Thank you.
It's like you got a four point seven million dollar project approval.
I will fax it in.
Thank goodness, considering we've already started the dirt work up there. Yeah, I'd have hated to see that go south.
Nothing from Troy this evening, he'll do a polka next time.
Thank you, look forward to seeing you again soon. Safe drive home.
Take care.
Thank you. And then next up, it sounds like we're gonna ask Lead Homes to come and present for our insurance.
Apparently there's a disadvantage for leading homes.
Oh, come on, that was fun, you got to sit through all that.
What I have to talk about is nowhere near as interesting as what was just presented.
Dang, they're expensive though.
Okay, any other questions? Actually, before I start, I see that Annie Brayton has left and I was going to formally apologize to her.
No, congratulate.
Wednesday night, I was presenting our family scholarship and for some unknown reason, I had my script and I tried to give the scholarship to Annie Brayton instead of her daughter Emily. So I was gonna ask Annie if she was gonna maybe pursue a master's degree or something like that, so...
Did you see Emily's reaction? She was ready to go ahead and let you do it.
Well, truthfully, I didn't know what I did until I heard a young man in front of me. Did you mean Emily? So you gotta poke fun at yourself. Well, once again, it's renewal time and like I said, this isn't as interesting as a beautiful new athletic complex, but as Sean said, nearly as expensive. Insurance has gone up tremendously, we're in a, in a very difficult marketplace at the moment. So, I want to do a couple of things tonight, keep it simple and brief. I would like to try to explain the why and then how it affects Amory. So a little background, I was here last June. Amory School District bid the property casualty insurance. We like to bid every three years or so. We were just starting this hard insurance market a year ago. And we went out to bid, when I say we, the district did, we provided a bid and the district went out for other bids. And because of the change in market, I would say we were rather unsuccessful, Sean. I don't think we had anyone actually submit a bid last year.
That is correct.
So that was, should have been a little bigger indication of what was coming down the pike. Our agency has enjoyed a fifty-year relationship with the school district. The insurance agency that I personally work with called Tricor Insurance and the school's insurance company is called EMC. We've had a thirty-year relationship with the Amory School District, so things have gone along very, very well. The other nice thing that we have going, Tricor Insurance is endorsed by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Tricor Insurance themselves insure about a hundred and seventy-five school districts within the state of Wisconsin. So, they provide a lot of help to Jim and Ben in Amory when they know the school business inside and out. So we're in constant communication with them. Actually, Sean and John, Ben and I, we had a Zoom conference with John Gibson from Tricor last week, just trying to figure out what we can do to help out here. So we had a, a fairly productive meeting there. As I said, we're in a very difficult insurance marketplace right now. I will honestly say I've been doing this for over forty years and this is the worst market I've seen since I started in the early eighties. Doesn't make it any more pleasant, but like I said, we want to try to explain the whys. If you haven't already felt it yourself personally, your own vehicle insurance, your home, your farms, your business insurance, if they haven't taken substantial increases, they will and they'll be coming fairly quickly. Besides major rate increases, when I say major, in the past, we've been dealing with inflationary increases. Right now, if it's under twenty percent, there's, we just, I hate to say it, but we don't look at it. We, we turn to the twenties to forty percent increases. Those are the ones that are very difficult to work with. That is, that's not great news to deliver to the board. So why is this going on? Well, we've kind of been a tunnel for wind and hail. And if you recall back in two thousand seventeen, Amory was struck by two hailstorms and a windstorm, May, June and July in a row. Balsam Lake was hit with a major windstorm in two thousand nineteen. Baldwin and Hudson were struck in the last two years. So, we're not the only area in the state of Wisconsin, but throughout the entire state plus the Midwest, we saw all the tornado action this last week. I mean, it's, it's just continuing and I'm not defending insurance companies, but at some point here, hopefully they're gonna catch a break because there hasn't been much of a break here over the last five, six years. Just to put this in perspective a little bit, the hailstorm, I believe it was last year that hit Hudson, one of the insurance companies that we represent did a, an actuarial analysis and within a ten or fifteen mile radius of Hudson, they calculated how much money they spent in wind and hail claims. Over three hundred million dollars in a small circle around Hudson. And that's just one storm. So the actuaries then did another study and now include, included all of the major rate increases that we're gonna talk about, deductible increases, coverage changes like not having replacement cost anymore, we're gonna go to depreciated value. If those changes had been in effect prior to that storm, that three hundred million dollars would have been reduced to about a hundred and eighty million dollars. Still a big number, but it's curbing what, what's going on. So, what insurance companies are doing, it isn't they don't want to pay claims, they do. They want to be there in the time of need, but they have to generate enough premium to pay their claims and they have to be smart about deductibles and, and other coverage changes. So what are we talking about? We're talking about building catastrophic insurance policies. The days of five hundred dollar deductible and a thousand, twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars, I hate to say it, but those days are gone. So with that background, what is gonna happen to Amory this year? Last year, and I forget the rate increase last year, but we did some other things. We added some coverage to buildings to get close to replacement costs and tuned some things up, which last year was a good year to do that. Last year, the total cost for all this district's insurance was two hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars. This year, we're looking at a twenty-three percent rate increase. Now, as I said, most larger property-laden policies are getting twenty percent to forty percent. So the number twenty-three percent doesn't sound bad. But when you equate it to dollars, that's sixty-six thousand dollars more than last year. I wish I could give you better news, I wish I could say I had all kinds of tools in the toolbox to fix it, but I don't. So, why do we have this major increase? Well, two things stood out. Sean and John and Ben and I went through it, talked with John Gibson at Tricor. Two major areas, work comp. For those, well, most of you don't know how the work comp program works in the state of Wisconsin. Work comp rates are mandated by the state, it's actually run by the state. Every insurance company uses the state rates. If we coded the Amory School District's work comp policy with ten different companies, as long as we had the same payrolls and the, the same number of folks involved, the rate's gonna be exactly the same. So there is no negotiated rate on work comp, it is what it is. Amory has had a little bit of a problem with what we call the experience mod and that would be, I guess, a way to describe that as the profitability index. We've been doing well for quite some time. Last year, we inched up a little bit. Last year, Amory was at one point zero seven, which means for every dollars' worth of work comp insurance, Amory pays a dollar, seven cents. So a dollar, one point zero zero is break even. Our goal is to be below one. Because of a series of claims, we have one fairly large claim on the books right now. It's a, it's a three-year, very complicated calculation that the state works. So right now, if the board approves this bid, our renewal date is July first. The experience mod for the school this forthcoming year is going to increase to one point five three. So that's a major increase. So about half of that sixty-six thousand dollar increase is gonna be in work comp costs only. And again, I hate to say it, but we don't have a darn thing to do about it. We can't add a deductible, we can't take this away. But I will shed, this is probably my one thing I can maybe say positively, because this is a three-year calculation. I've already been told for next year, so July first of two thousand twenty-five, one of those larger claims is most likely gonna fall out of that calculation. And again, we keep our fingers crossed, we don't have any big bumps in the road this coming year. But we're anticipating, can't guarantee it, but we're anticipating that mod going down from one point five three to one point three five. So we should enjoy at least a twenty percent decrease in work comp costs. Every year for the last, at least five or six years in a row, the actual work comp rates have gone down in Wisconsin, so we're hoping we can enjoy that as well. So that's the news on work comp. We've got a twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar increase that we can't do much about. So what's left? Well, I've been talking about property insurance and that's the other problem. The district is very heavy in property insurance. If we look at our buildings and our business personal property and our property in the open, we are insuring approximately a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. When you look at twenty to twenty-five percent rate increases, that's the first part of it, but I guess the, the other news is we're gonna be looking at some deductible changes. So that's almost as painful as the rate increase by itself, so it's a double-edged sword this year. Last year, Sean and John and the rest of us included, we thought it was a good idea to increase the property deductible to ten thousand dollars. Years ago, it was a thousand, went to twenty-five hundred, went to five thousand, became proactive and went to ten thousand. That was a good move, that saved some money last year. That deductible is what's called per occurrence, or if you want to refer to it as per event. So one storm comes through, Amory pays ten thousand dollars. Another storm comes through, we pay another ten thousand. Unfortunately, that is gonna probably go by the wayside as well. So what the deductible structure this year is, we're still gonna have a ten thousand dollar deductible per occurrence. It's gonna be for any kind of covered claim other than our friends called wind and hail. So if we don't have any wind and hail, what I'm gonna tell you next, you can totally disregard. But keeping our fingers crossed, that might happen. If we have wind and hail, because we have a hundred and twenty-five million dollars of insurance, not only EMC, but all insurance companies are increasing deductibles tremendously based on how much insurance you have, how old your buildings are, the age of roofs. And other than this building, with the referendum work and all the maintenance that George has been doing and the board has approved, we're in fabulous shape because this... and the board has approved, we're in fabulous shape, 'cause this could have been a lot worse. But the part that I think is most painful right now, the high school building and the middle school building, because of the amount of insurance on those two buildings, we're gonna look at a fifty thousand dollar wind hail deductible per building.
When's the last time we've turned in a wind hail claim?
Oh, it's been a long time. I think the last, we, we've never had a full catastrophic loss claim.
We've been fortunate.
The biggest claim that John Gibson found in the last decade, I think, was fifty-five thousand. Wasn't that something around there? So it's been a long time, yeah.
The J-Wing addition roof was replaced
Yeah.
six or seven years ago because of hail and both greenhouses.
And that may have been in that two thousand seventeen storm, because pretty much every home in Amory got a new roof in that year. I was just gonna, as we're talking about deductibles, fifty thousand dollars per building, twenty-five thousand dollars per building is a huge number, you know, I get it. But I mentioned the hailstorm in Hudson last year. The school district of Hudson got hit two out of three years. And the last claim that I was told about, and I don't think it was just one building, it was probably their entire district. But the school district of Hudson in that last hailstorm, they had a five and a half million dollar loss. One storm. So obviously, when you put it into perspective of five and a half million dollars and you have to pay fifty, twenty-five, you know, maybe even a hundred thousand with multiple buildings, it's a lot of money to the district, but if you're gonna get the other five million dollars, at least it takes a little bit of the pain away.
Are we, and, and is there any of our buildings or anything that we are sitting on actual cash value instead of replacement costs then?
You just stole the last bit of bad news.
Okay. Sorry, started stealing a thunder.
Nope, that's quite all right. I'm more than happy to pass this off. As I said, this building is the only building that doesn't have a new roof. So the intermediate school is gonna have actual cash value or depreciated value. All other buildings are gonna be replacement costs because of all the work that's been done. And the bus garage is not subject to the fifty thousand or twenty-five thousand wind hail. That building is gonna be just ten thousand dollars, Ryan. So that one skirted it.
And, and why is that different?
There's not that much insurance on the building.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't say that much, considerably less compared to the four major, major buildings on campus. So that's the, the bad news. After meeting with Sean and John and Ben and John Gibson last week, EMC understands that this is a nasty thing for school budgets, so they're also trying to help if they can. So they presented two options. Not that we wanna increase deductibles more, we're not increasing wind or hail deductibles. Those are hopefully gonna stay the same. But I mentioned we have that ten thousand dollar all other perils deductible, so any claim other than wind and hail, you now pay ten thousand. As the question was asked, how many claims have we had in the past? Very few in the property area. Obviously, we talked about work comp, and Ryan and I talk frequently with buses and things. But on a property side, we've been really good. So if administration and the board wants to roll the dice a little bit here over the next couple of years, 'cause I'm afraid to say we're gonna be in this for probably another twelve, eighteen to twenty-four months, if we increase that ten thousand dollar deductible to twenty-five, the district can save five thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars. So round numbers, fifty-five hundred dollars. Doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it would help. If you wanna roll the dice a little more and go to a fifty thousand dollar deductible, so all the numbers pretty much match, you get a bigger bang for your dollar going to fifty thousand, that credit would be fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars, so roughly fifteen thousand dollars.
And Jim, can you, under the first option, they also presented the one percent minimum. Can you just explain that one just?
Yeah. We've been dealing with hard numbers for deductibles. A lot of companies are doing away with hard numbers in the wind and hail area. So they are going to percentages, and the percentage deductible comes off of the insurable value of the building. One percent is the lowest. They can go two, three, four, I saw five percent in a hurricane laden area, which doesn't affect us. But if you went to a percentage deductible, and I'm assuming it's still gonna be per building, one percent of several million dollars is a big number. So John Gibson has presented many of these proposals, and his feeling, his recommendation is that may come back to haunt you. He feels that you're better off sticking with the solid number. You can at least, not that you would budget for claims, but it's a placeholder, you know what the maximum's gonna be. I hope we're not having discussions in a year or two on percentages, but reality says we might. So you do have that one percent deductible available, but I guess I would suggest that consider the twenty-five thousand all other perils, fifty thousand all other perils in lieu of a one percent wind hail. And I think, John, you, you mentioned in our meeting that, kinda what I just said, we need to change gears here, we need to be more catastrophic thinking rather. And I'm not, I'm using the term maintenance in a bad way. You didn't use insurance in a maintenance way, but if your premium was reasonable and you could keep a low deductible, obviously, it protected the budget for dollars to go elsewhere. But that's now an old world. The new world is much more rate and much more participation if something happens. So that's my story. As, as unpleasant as it is, I will try to field questions.
So it looks like there's kind of three options at the bottom there for potential savings. We kinda talked about the one percent, which I'll say is option one. Option maybe two, change in the property deductible from the ten thousand to twenty-five thousand to save, let's say fifty-five hundred dollars. So we're basically putting fifteen thousand dollars at risk for fifty-five hundred dollars savings. And that fifty-five hundred would come off the three fifty-three above.
Yes, approximately.
Pro- yeah, yep, and then.
With that deductibles per building.
Not the all other perils deductible, Steve. That's per occurrence. It's just if it's wind or hail, then whether it's, depending on what school, it's either a twenty-five thousand per building or a fifty thousand per building. So the deductible options Dale was talking about, that is per storm or per event, or per claim, I should say.
And so then if we wanted to risk a little more, we could basically risk forty thousand to save fifteen thousand.
And if we wanted to risk even more, we could save twenty-five, wash one of the increases away, but that's putting us at a.
A lot of risk.
Because if you, you just think of it in terms of one percent across the entire district on a hundred and twenty-five million dollars is a lot more than fifty grand per building or ten thousand per building.
That seems a little, maybe a little too risky.
Well, and like I said, I, I hope I don't come with as unpleasant news next year, but we like, we don't wanna spend the whole works right off the bat, 'cause if we encounter some rate increase next year or some other coverage changes, that, what we're maybe not wanting to do this year, that might be next year's discussion.
And just so you guys have a, a little bit more of a picture, the entire total increase is sixty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Of that workers' compensation is thirty thousand five hundred ninety-five, and property is twenty-six five eighty-four.
So if we did, if we actually did this, increased our deductible to the fif- to have the fifteen thousand dollar savings, it's really, you're only looking at seven thousand dollars worth of building coverage additional.
And the.
Which is really the only thing that we have control over.
Correct.
'Cause we don't have control over the.
And all the other lines are that we have, each one of those took, I would say, like a maintenance bump. So it's not all property, but the numbers we're talking about is inclusive of all the types of insurance. But that's a, a good, simple way to look at it. Yeah, if we didn't have a work comp issue right now, this conversation would have been a little easier.
Personally, I do this every year for my business, and it was painful to see my insurance go up thirty percent last year because of natural disasters, and we know that that's gonna happen. I guess I'm always leaning towards the save the money and not make the insurance companies rich, and you're gonna put it in your own pocket, and you're gonna plan for that catastrophic event to happen. This is a, a big savings that we can keep our, our money in the district instead of off to the insurance company, in my opinion. I would think it would be smart to raise that from the ten to the fifty and, and take that almost fifteen thousand dollar savings.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well. That's what I would do, I think, if, if it was my own property. The understanding is a little bit of a gamble, but.
My question is to John, if you had an incident or two, where do you come up with the fifty thousand or a hundred thousand if you go that route?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question, and I, I think that's where my, my stomach turns just a little bit. Because at three hundred and fifty-three thousand and ninety dollars, we're budgeted for that. So that's the good news, and for twenty-four, twenty-five. Are we for twenty-five, twenty-six with another sixty-five thousand dollar increase? No, we're not. Doesn't mean we can't be, but as of right now, from my forecast, we're just not. So I, I, the, the fifty thousand dollars, I mean, that's a hundred grand that's coming from somewhere. And where is it gonna have to come from? And that's really what the problem is. I can't budget a hundred thousand dollars and put it into an assigned for the potential for a deductible or for an inc- for an incident. Twenty thousand, we can figure out where that comes from. When we start getting up to a hundred thousand or even fifty thousand, it becomes a lot more difficult. So for, and, and again, I just, if it was, my recommendation would be roll with the ten thousand. Save, not, not actually participate in any of the savings.
What about that, finding that money in our building and grounds? Seven hundred thousand every year, and we have that budgeted every year.
Yep.
So we could easily find fifty thousand there if we're not.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's just, right now, as it is, we don't have to even potentially cut anything. What you're suggesting would be having to cut it at some point, from somewhere.
If we did, I mean, we do this every year, so, and if we're looking at, if we took the chance this year and raised that deductible, and we're kinda gonna bank on hopefully watching that workman's comp claims roll off next year, so that would lower us a little bit more, we could think about then going instead of a more catastrophic plan next year, to go to that more budget friendly plan next year.
Yeah, absolutely, yep, I, I understand what you're saying.
And I certainly can't guarantee this, but that's why I wanted to share the work comp news, that we can hopefully enjoy a twenty percent reduction right out of the chute. I am really hoping that our rate increases next year, instead of being twenty to forty percent, are gonna be in that fifteen to twenty-five percent. I would be a fool to tell the board that we're gonna have a minimal rate increase next year. We're gonna have a double digit. Hopefully not twenty-five percent like we are this year, but John is good. He's, he's gonna have to budget an increase, and we had this conversation last week. It's not sustainable for school districts, it's not sustainable for businesses, and it's not sustainable for individuals to get twenty and thirty percent rate increases year after year after year. At some point, it has to plateau, or some other factor's gonna have to come into play. So like I said, are we in the middle of this? I hope so. I hope we're gonna be on the downhill side of it here soon, but we're gonna have a similar, but hopefully less painful conversation next year. The, the part that gives me the most angst, having done this with the board for years, yeah, rate increases are not fun, but you can usually handle those. What gives me angst and not sleep at night is a fifty thousand dollar per building wind hail deductible. If, if we had all four buildings badly damaged, you know, we're sitting there with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible with four buildings. And I'm sure out of the building fund, it's there, but that's not what the intent of that money is.
No.
But we're, we're entering a new world, we have to slowly work our way to catastrophic coverage.
And just so you guys have the whole picture, there's two policies that we also have that are not through Lead Home. One is for cybersecurity, and the other one is our student assurances. Two policies that are just truly must haves. If not, if you're curious, ask Marsh, Marshfield and Rhine Land or what happens when somebody steals a million dollars from you. But those are flat for these, this year. We haven't had any sort of claims against, any sort of major claims against either of those. Those are completely flat for this year. In fact, student assurances is down by about a percent, which is only two hundred and fifty bucks, but still.
We're looking for any good news.
A hundred.
Any, thanks. I, I do know talking, I just actually redid our property insurance probably a month ago, and I, we took the fifteen or the thirty percent hit last year after about three years of, you know, pretty stable rates. And this year wasn't nearly as bad, just because we took thirty percent last year. So we didn't take it, take it too bad this year. Knowing of where my insurance company sits, and they only cover like Wisconsin, because it's, so you're not looking at big territories and then no claims, it, it's starting to stabilize out. Tricor, do they, how, where do they all go in the Midwest? Are they just Wisconsin, or are they all over the Midwest, or?
Well, the, the hundred and seventy-five schools that Tricor ensures, that's on the western half of Wisconsin. The other Wisconsin School Board Association endorsed agency is called TriM out of Madison. They have the eastern side of the state, so the, the rates that Amory is dealing with through EMC are Wisconsin rates, so we're, we're living with that. But EMC's home is in Iowa, while Iowa's in tougher shape than Wisconsin. So we're, we're not helping the Iowa schools, we're, we're dealing with Wisconsin schools.
Okay, that's kind of my, I was wondering, guess there.
And I guess one last quick thing, it was part of our meeting with John Gibson last week. John hit insurance company financial stability. There are five major school, or insurance companies that in school, insure school districts. EMC being one, Liberty Mutual being two, Church Mutual being three, doing the others from memory. Community Insurance being four, and the last name escapes me at the moment. But of those five, EMC is an A rated company by Best, so they're in fabulous shape. Church Mutual and Community, I'm not saying they're in financial distress, but they're teetering just a bit. So as much as you don't wanna pay any more than you want to, you wanna be with a company that's gonna be there to pay the five and a half million dollar claim.
This seems to be a, an issue all across insurance companies in general, is that they're in pretty bad financial shape. And then they're certainly pulling out of states and not even cover, taking policies in certain states, so.
The major, we don't deal with town mutuals in our agency, but the majority of town mutuals in Wisconsin were forced to merge last year because of that very reason.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Is there a motion on an option to choose here for school district insurance?
I'm not gonna make a motion, but I wanna make a statement that I, I do not like the fifty thousand dollar option. I think that's, I mean, I understand you're saving fourteen or fifteen in premium, but you run that risk of trying to come up with fifty thousand, a hundred thousand. Not a fan of that.
I'm a pharmaceutical gambler. Hold my breath every day.
Would, would that deductible happen just once in a year, or could it happen more than once?
It could, it could happen multiple times Dale, so again, we gotta, the, the wind hail thing is per building, big number. So that's over here, but what we're talking about now with this other saving. But what we're talking about now with this other savings, that's considered, the real term is per occurrence, so let's say per event or per claim. So if we don't have anything, it isn't gonna happen. It's not like health insurance where you can accumulate over the year and then you're done. Every time a pipe breaks, it's an occurrence. Every time a, a car drives into the school building and collapses a wall, that's another occurrence. So it's a per claim deductible.
Per claim, so then we would literally, I mean, we could have to come up with the difference from ten thousand to fifty, forty thousand dollars per claim.
Each time something other than a wind or hail.
So to refine, it could be twice, three, four, five times.
Right.
So my question was, how many claims have we had? Hail and wind is gonna be the biggest, the biggest thing that you're gonna have to worry about. The other thing is gonna be fire, somebody driving into the building. I don't think that that's ever happened. Uh, I don't know that we've had a fire. So I, what else? Uh, busted pipes, I guess, or water damage coming in from the lake or whatever.
And, and I think the water one is the one that I think is the best example here because fifty thousand dollars worth of water cleanup. It, I mean, that's a lot of water cleanup. So it's at a fifty thousand dollar deductible to do ten thousand dollars worth of work is just, to me, that's, that's the scary principle. And i- I would say it's the same logic when we were talking about health insurance, right? It was the second year variable number, that's a scary number. And I think this is a scary number as well at fifty thousand per occurrence. Including fifty thousand for two buildings for rain, for hail and wind and twenty-five at two other buildings. So hypothetically speaking, if we had a catastrophic storm here that lit the buildings on fire at the same point. We'd be upwards of a million dollars just in deductible costs.
I'm not even gonna comment on that, because you would prefer a fire rather than a wind or hail claim. And I, I will just add this. If you choose one of the options tonight, you can change it later. I mean, we're not married to it for the entire year. If you choose something tonight and after thinking about it for a month or two months and you say, you know what? I'd rather go this way or this way, you can always change it.
What's the timeline?
So our policy, our par- policy date, sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, Sean. Our policy date is July first, which is why it's in, it's traditionally been a May um, item. Um, so, you know, we do have a little bit of wiggle room here.
Exactly.
I could use some time. I'm still having troubles past the, again, the Y's a lot is in my head, while you're already doing numbers.
I could table it.
Yeah, you don't have to have it this month. Nope. That's why we're here in May instead of June last year, because June's numbers were much, much more favorable, so that's why we're here now.
I appreciate it. I'm, I'm just thinking of the movie Armageddon where they're talking, you know, where they're, where they're talking about uh, what the environment's gonna be like on this rock. Hurting towards earth and they're like, they go into this long explanation and then Owen Wilson says like, the worst environment you can imagine. And maybe that's next year though. Okay.
So would we like to table this and think a little bit more about this?
That's fine. I'll just throw out that I'm all for no change. I could be convinced of the ten to twenty-five. That's it.
Well, that would be a change.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm for one of those two.
Okay, gotcha.
It's here for either no change or.
Depends if the other board members feel strongly.
Yeah, no, I, I'm.
But I'm good with, you table it for now and certainly.
We're, we're gambling either way, I guess, and you know, we're, we're not gambling with our own personal money. We're gambling with the district's money, so.
Well, yes, you're gambling that, you know, a storm comes through or it doesn't, right? But you have to bank on the fact that if it does, you wanna be prepared.
Yeah.
What's it gonna cost you? And if you're willing to risk fifteen thousand dollars per occurrence to save fifty-five hundred dollars in premium. That, or forty thousand dollars, you know.
Again, when's the last time we had a claim?
I could it.
I'm just saying, I, I was just saying. Uh, if, do you?
You're talking about an awful lot, Shar.
Um, I guess I would like every board member to feel confident and comfortable with their vote on this. So if we would like to table that to give um, some more thought, I'm okay with that.
Additional questions that we have in the, in the meantime? Who do we direct them to support?
I would send them to John.
Yeah, and I'll, I, I, from what I've heard, you guys have asked a lot about history. So I'll work with Jim to get a little bit more comprehensive claims history, specific to property insurance, if that helps you guys to make a decision.
Yeah, I think that would be fantastic. With that, do I have a motion to table this?
Uh, the only other question I have, is there anything else to talk about here, Jim, with crime, auto?
Not really, uh, the only other thing that's changing. I haven't had a chance to talk to Ryan yet. Uh, all insurance companies are going to minimum comp and collision deductibles. And we've enjoyed very low deductibles because it hasn't been worth the district's while to increase them. So we've been at a five hundred collision and a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible, comp deductible for a very long time. Again, I hate to tell you that you have no choice, but you have no choice. Uh, we're going to, Ryan, you ready? Thousand collision, thousand comp, across the board, which most people are carrying and getting to that on their personal vehicles now. So that one didn't bother me so much, other than you just need to know.
Um, replacement value on buildings, is that, that's all in those policies?
Yep, the only one it isn't gonna have replacement cost on the roof is this building and.
Just the whole building itself, just?
Yeah, the structure would be replacement cost. For, I will double check it, Steve.
Yep.
But the way I understand it is this building will have depreciated value on the roof and the roof only, but I will make sure of that.
One thing I'd like to ask you to look at too, I know that with, with uh, my building across the road. Um, we had the same insurance company for years and years and years, and I know that that replacement value gets increased every year by a certain percentage. And my question is, has that outpaced the actual replacement cost? And I know that we did an analysis in square footage and um, found that we actually needed to reduce that replacement value a little bit. So I'd like to see if there's anything there that would potentially foster some savings.
And, and Steve, with the, sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder here, with the construction that's going on. We're gonna be doing a comprehensive line by line and making sure that we're adequately covered or if, ideally, we've discovered we're way over insured. Uh, but that is something that, that it's at the forefront for the insurance picture for, not for this coming year.
Okay, thank you.
The EMC periodically comes out and does inspections of every building and that's, last year, we were a little shy. We, for years, we were going in at eighty percent of replacement, then ninety percent. So we increased last year to what we felt was a comfortable number, close to a hundred percent. So without digging into it, Steve, I think we're in good shape. I asked Sean last week what the per square foot cost for the elementary addition was, and I had a number in my head and he duplicated the number. We're, we're dealing. The square foot for a commercial building, and I think, Sean, you told me the elementary was around three hundred dollars a square foot. So simple math says we get to that hundred plus million dollars in a row.
Sure. And that includes all uh, tear down and removal as well, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good.
Is your motion to table the uh, acting on the school insurance?
I make that motion.
Steve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Joe? Uh, all of, any discussion on tabling this?
Only to say that, that mandates that we have to make a decision next month, so.
Yeah, so we can, we can table to a particular time, which would be uh, to next month. And then um, that doesn't change and still be a first, and still be a main motion and a second.
And just so we know, the next month's meeting is June twenty-fourth, so it is late.
Yeah, does that give enough time?
That was, okay.
Okay.
July one.
Yeah, that's enough time.
In my world, that's a lot of time.
It's a pretty much a done call and that's it.
All the work's been done.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion on tabling uh, this decision to next month? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of tabling this decision to next month, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nope. Motion passed. This will be tabled the next month and we'll see us, we'll see you when we get that done.
Sounds great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Officials are here. Or official.
Official.
And Jeff's gonna beat us up on that.
So we have a couple officials associations here that are going to uh, award some different items to the athletic department. Ironically, one of our officials stopped in today. He needed to umpire three additional innings tonight, so he's not here. Um, his name's Jim Selt. He's a character. For those of you that know him, um, the meeting probably would have lasted another hour if he had access to this microphone. Um, so Nick's gonna work his way up here. Nick is an official, uh, in the president of the Arrowhead Officials Association. Probably on the road sixty nights during the year. Um, and again, he works with the training, um, with the Arrowhead Officials Association. And he also has a concrete business on the side, if anybody's looking for concrete. Uh, but we appreciate Nick coming here, my own personal plug. Uh, appreciate Nick coming up here to uh, help us out tonight and award us. You, you got your business card? All right, Nick.
All right, again, my name's Nick Peck. Um, first of all, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I'm not Mr. Stone, so I don't want to quick. I don't have officials. On two awards. Um, first one being uh, table award. Table award is for best table for both volleyball and basketball. Unfortunately, I don't officiate volleyball, but on basketball court, there are five officials. Um, I know most of you probably think there's three. There are five. Three on the court, there's official timer and official scorer. They are part of the officials team. So a very important role in our team. Quick story, um, at a game, uh, not at Amory, but in this conference towards seating meetings, so very, very crucial game. A lot of implications on seating. Came down close and one of the teams thought they were mischarged a timeout. And a table's like, nope, this is what it is. During a timeout, one of the coaches proceeded to voice their opinion towards our table. Of which I said, nope, we're done. This is part of our team. You're not arguing with them. They're part of us. Ended in a one-point game. And of course, we got the, the coaches coming after us. And long story short, no official wants to be a part of a decision of a game. Well, alas, the best compliment we can get is, we didn't know you were there as an official. So we lose sleep over that of thinking, oh, did we mess up? Did we make a mistake? It turns out this table did not make a mistake. They were right. So what I'm trying to say is, a table is very, very important in, in these kids' game. That's what they're there for, as the kids, so. The second award is for uh, hospitality. I'm also a member of the Pierce St. Croix Officials Association. Um, and they do a vote also on uh, hospitality. And so this vote is sent out to all the officials anonymously, we can put it in. Hospitality is something that kinda goes along lines of someone communicating with who you're gonna meet. You know, so and so is gonna meet you here. This is where you'll be. All that stuff is kind of almost like expected, okay? Then there's things people can do above and beyond. Um, I know we're presenting this to Mr. Fern, but he would be the first to say it goes right down the line when he's not there. I know Josh is there quite a bit, other people that are there to meet us at the door, bring us to the locker room. Never have to worry about getting a water, Gatorade, usually a hot dog, popcorn, candy bar, all that fun stuff. Above and beyond what some schools do. So, that being said, um, our votes came through, um, and it came through that Amory was voted both best hospitality and table, so. I do know it's not the first time Amory has won this award also. And my comment, comment at our banquet was, you want it, then beat him. So it is nice coming here. Um, unfortunately, Mr. Fern does ref, so he's not always here. Uh, but again, when he's not here, no beat is skipped. So I know he portrays that down and it just goes right down the line. So thank you, appreciate it, and uh, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Awesome. I just, I wanna give a shout out to one of our table workers for volleyball. Jess Smith is in attendance today, so. Um, Matt Pedersen helps out with that. Uh, we have Beth Pedersen for basketball and Matt Peterson. Chuck Wilman's also one of the announcers. Uh, but we value the time that these guys do and sacrifice for their families and the least we can do is treat them well. And we've, we've been like that in Amory for many, many years. Uh, we host big events and there's a reason because of that. Um, it's something that's been passed down and our job is just not to screw it up and keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Sure, longstanding condition. Okay, is there any other people hiding in the audience that I'm not seeing before we go back to, okay?
I don't think so.
Back to the informational items then, um, moving down the list would be the referendum building grounds update by Joe Vierkant.
Well, we have the budget on the screen. I'm not sure which we wanted first.
Yeah, actually, this is a little, little to no movement. Yep, little to no movement as far as Kraus Anderson budget is concerned. Um, it, it legitimately is the exact same as it was last month. Um, but I was uh, contacted this morning by Julie Vierkant who noticed a typo, which I think is actually a very important one. So I just wanted to, just, so if you could go back to that. Yep. So in that bottom right-hand corner, the uh, total budget over and under is supposed to have parentheses noting that we are still under budget. But it's a PDF and I'm not gonna alter their document, so. Good news, not bad news.
Right, so one point six four eight uh, million dollars under budget.
Correct, unless anything changed this week.
Anything else with that? A budget document that needs to be clarified?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. And then, uh, actually, Joe had a good question earlier. If we go to the second page. The, the numbers kinda don't match up and a lot of it is kinda what we talked about earlier with the GMP. That blue category right there, the change order category, they're not necessarily all change orders. A lot of that too is the work that George is doing, um, or is heading up or something along those lines. Um, and even if you start kinda adding all that sort of stuff up and you look at the bottom, there's a big piece missing. And that's because the million dollars is actually on the budget page, not on the contingency page, which is what you're looking at right here. But they did carry it forward, so I just need to give them a little spreadsheet advice.
Anything else with, in regards to the referendum and building a grounds update?
I don't have anything.
Think we meet on Wednesday?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so Steve, make sure you're at that meeting.
I'll just show up for the whole day and tell, somebody tells me a time.
All right then, um, moving on then for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit review. And this year, John's going to present that because apparently I understand that they're backlog at um, CLA.
Yeah, so this is actually a presentation that you guys historically get in December, so we're, we're not that far behind. Um, but this is actually not to, to any fault of the uh, school districts whatsoever. So Cl- uh, Clifton Larson Allen LLP is our um, auditors. Um, we've been using them for many, many years. This year, they had quite a uh, lot more customers than their staffing could handle, which is why the process took so long. Um, it, for a long time, I sat going, what did we do that wrong that it was, that it's taken this long? And it turns out, nothing. So everything is above board in what we thought it would be. So this page right here, um, I did provide you guys each with a book. I chose to save money this year. Um, instead of ordering thirty, I only ordered eight. Um, so if you have questions or if you don't wanna keep yours after reading this riveting material. Um, please feel free to return them to my office, just so that I can have them there if, if need be. Um, but the two pages that are included on Board Book and here is the uh, audit summary report. Um, and it's the big, it's the big figures, it's the big numbers. What happened to our fund balance? What was our expenditures versus revenues? Um, and really, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna highlight um, just a couple of things on here. The first one is just, you will see on here that there was a reduction to our unassigned uh, fund balance for fiscal year uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, that reduction was plus or minus about six hundred thousand dollars, and those are all from one-off. And those are all from one-off, one-time expenses. And again, that, I was not here during the majority of that fiscal year. So I can't necessarily speak to exactly what went wrong and how we ended up somewhat off-budget. But I can tell you that it was a real bad snowplowing year. That was part of it. We also had a lot of just other kind of one-time expenses. So if you have questions, feel free to ask and I can definitely try my best to answer those. And then at the top of the first page, the auditor's report opinion, this is really where they list out what our dings are or our, if there is anything that's really as serious. And luckily, we only had three dings this year. Two, the limited segregation of duties and the material audit adjustments are bizarre ones. We've gotten dinged on them every year forever, and we will continue to get dinged on them every year simply because we don't have the money or manpower needed to have complete segregation of duties like Gatsby wants. And the material audit adjustments is, we get dinged on that because they're the ones who make our final auditor adjustments. Yes, it's weird. It's bizarre. Of 421 school districts, CLA says 421 of them get both of those dings. So those are on there. There is a third ding that was this year that was rectified very quickly, which was when they tested our special education transportation. There was a 1/10 mile discrepancy between reported and actual mileage when they did their calculations. So that was just a simple conversation with Tracy Hammer and Ryan Pease, and that fixed itself. So that shouldn't be one that we get again. Again, I don't want to spend a ton of time going over this unless you guys want me to. I know we've got a lot to go still. But overall, the audit was okay. It wasn't a great one. It wasn't a bad one. And it was quite the experience.
Was your first time going through this?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, yeah, so.
You survived.
Yeah, actually, and CLA has been a wonderful partner of ours. There's some complex accounting that had to take place because of a couple really just weird, small entries that were made by my predecessor. And it's stuff that I still can't wrap my brain around. I think it's what gave Twyla a stroke.
That'll do it. That'll raise your blood pressure. All right. Any discussion from the board or any questions for John on what we're seeing here?
And I will say, if you are gonna read the book, almost all of the verbiage that you see, all the paragraphs, all the sentences, is they have to give reasoning why they have jurisdiction to look at that particular area. So you see a lot of it about their release of liability. So you can kind of skip reading some of the words and just look right at the figures if you want to.
We have a motion to accept it or just?
Wait, this is just purely informational. The only question I guess I had, John, is I see that our general obligation debt as percentage of debt limitation, we were at 35.1 last year, we're at 29.1 this year.
Are you, you're looking at the summary sheet?
Yep, I'm looking at the summary sheet.
Yeah, so that's that, that was our fund 38 debt that we started paying off, which is what led to the $5 million borrow. This is what you're seeing represented there.
All right, that's what I thought. Any other questions from anybody? Nope? All right, moving on then. Thanks, John. That was a lot shorter than having the other guy here.
And he probably will come back next year, just so we can do his more comprehensive review.
Great. Okay, then we have the first reading of policy 527, employee grievances and rule 527 grievance procedure. And Dr. Durfler.
So what you see in the first two documents are current policy 527, and then there's what's referred to as 527 rule. It's the existing language and it's been the language in place since 2014. A request was made by the board to revisit the grievance procedure and rule. And that's what you see as the third document. And that third document is titled First Reading 513, 2024. A lot of the same information, but you'll see it categorized different with grievance procedure. For instance, if you can scan down after the definitions and procedures, you'll see it broken into categories. The first category is employee complaints about something other than workplace safety, discipline, or termination. Then there's a step-by-step procedure for that. And then you'll see procedures for agreements concerning employee terminations and employee discipline. There's simply two different tracks of process and it's noted as such. And then it has the steps that are going with each. So it's a lot of the same information, but not identical. And there's also a procedure for concerns regarding workplace safety. So it's just broken into categories because not everything is, can and should be categorized the same way. So I'm not sure if you've had a chance to wade through it. I'm certainly not going to read it to you. That would be sort of fundamental. I'm not, it isn't anything that you're approving this evening. This is the first reading. The significance of May-June is contracts begin in the next contract year on July 1. So when an employee says they reviewed the procedure, it would be nice to be able to say, we reviewed the procedure. And it is the procedure that we reviewed that we signed off stating, we understand. Their contract starts July 1. This policy would then start July 1. We thankfully don't have to spend a lot of time on grievance procedure because there isn't a lot of employee discipline. There isn't a lot of workplace safety work that's happening. So that's good news. Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, so this one is basically, this policy here, that's on the board, is the combination of the previous two or the other two.
It is. It is. And this was a product run through Riley, Steve Weld, who specializes in employment law, is the one that reworked what you see here.
Yeah, okay.
So this isn't, this, I guess the procedure and how you came up with this isn't specifically from another district?
No, it's not from another district. It's from Riley. They perhaps use this policy in other districts, but I don't know that.
Any other questions or discussion? Again, this is just the first reading. If everybody would like to take some more time yet and look at any amended amendments or changes that need to be made, we certainly could still bring those forward next month and then in the second reading and then just have them changed. No?
I'm good.
Good with that? Okay, then we'll make sure that everybody, if you have questions or anything, make sure to reach out to Dr. Durfler in the meantime before next month. And then we can make sure that we have those included for the second reading next month. Ready to go for approval. Action items, we've already taken care of the GMP. So this would be, brings us to second reading of policy 142 for the school attorney that we tackled in the last month.
Nothing you see here has changed other than, I believe, maybe the date was the same, May 13, 2024, with the red is the same as it was last month.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy 142.
Is there a second?
A second, then.
Motion by Dale, seconded by Steve to approve the policy 142, school attorney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving policy 142 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nope.
No.
Is there an amendment that you would like or?
No, I've already discussed my reasons.
And you don't want that in the public forum or? Or are you talking about that we discussed it last month, but I thought your stance last month was that it was okay, given the discretion? I'm only just giving you an opportunity to speak. You don't have to. Your vote is valid either way.
Perfect, let's move on.
Okay. For one vote, the motion passes to approve policy 142. That would bring us then to approval of the 2024-2025 open enrollment applications. Dr. Durfler.
I'm waiting for it to be there. It's happening soon.
Usually I'm not faster than Becky. That's crazy.
Well, today you are.
So what you see on the screen on the left in green is open enrollment applications in, in a quantity for 2024-2025 of 20 students. And then applying for open enrollment out in 24-25 is 19. You really can't say anything about the folks that are moving out. You can appeal that move, but you likely wouldn't have success in doing so. But the ones transferring in, you would want to hopefully approve those because those are students interested in coming here as Amory students. And that would be an item that you would need to take action on if you see fit.
I would make a motion to approve the open enrollments.
Is there a second? Gwen? Motion made by Steve, seconded by Gwen to approve the open enrollments for the 2024-2025 school year. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yep.
So when they open enroll, are they open enrolling as they're going to be in-building? Or are they possibly doing remote?
They're open enrolling from their resident district, wherever that is, to our district to be educated in our school system. It could be a circumstance where they have an alternative setting that they're in, but they're our student and we make the choice as to what that education would be. But they're coming here. And you don't have to come. You can open enrollment and then choose not to come and enroll. Then you do that and stay right where you are. These are actually pretty fortuitous numbers. We tend to find ourselves upside down, but right now we're up one. I know it's not a lot, but up one is up one. And then there's a lot of traffic that happens over the course of the months before the start of school. Kids that disappear and kids that show up. We really don't know those numbers until we get up to the third Friday count in September. We have a, we have an idea come the first day of school, but we don't really know for certain. Yeah, Gwen?
Presently, I don't believe we have anyone that's open enrollment that's doing virtual. There's a little bit of some hoops to jump through that because open enrollment out district into a district here has to be a charter vote.
Correct.
So because of where you don't have a specific, we do have virtual options for students that live in the district, but because we're not in charter, it would be some state group there.
Right. There are kids that are open enrolling into various districts that have charters and have virtual schools. And those, those school districts are the ones that are seeing the greatest growth because COVID demonstrated to families that it is possible in some cases to educate from home. And they've chosen to continue doing that in the post-COVID days. But it's all family choice.
And on the application, does it, again, I would just like to know the why's. Is on the application itself to enroll out?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. You'd have to ask them. It doesn't ask, why are you leaving? In the, this is the traditional window or the, whatever the phrase is. The open enrollment regular period is at this time. The non-traditional window is basically the other 11 months of the year. And on there, they have to state why. And a lot of times, they're seeking to open and roll out. And a lot of times, it's social and emotional concerns, bullying or not getting along. And then the other reasons that you see a lot of is, well, their siblings go to school here or their siblings go to school there. We want them to be with their siblings. But in order to know the answers to this question, the question you're asking, you literally have to call them and ask them. And we did actually about four or five years ago and then about 10 years ago, track that information. We literally had a map identifying where they were going. What we found, a lot of times, is New Richmond was the district of destination and you'll see that on here. And it's a lot of times folks that live in the southwest part of this district down towards Star Prairie. They live in that portion of our district in New Richmond, simply more logistically reasonable because they travel that direction for work. They drop their kids in the morning and pick them up at night. On a good day, I imagine Star Prairie here is a 15-minute trek. And if you had to do it at the end of the day, it's a half-hour trek because you gotta go by and then come all the way back. So a lot of times, New Richmond is the choice because of logistics. Go ahead, Tommy.
Yeah, I remember, we took those calls. Some of them didn't like, want to answer the phone.
No, they didn't want that.
Or didn't want to say why, but almost, you know, I don't have the data currently, but I bet you 70% of them were. Because I, I, if you're going to New Richmond, that's actually because I live right there. Within miles versus driving in. And then if you look on them, I mean, you can guess if they're applying to McFarland or Grantsburg, they're looking to go to I Forward or a online program.
In the first line on open enrollment out gives you an idea what this picture looks like. They're open enrolling out to three different districts. That doesn't mean they're going to three different districts. Those are just the choices and they're gonna pick one. So you can mark as many as, if I can go or not go, you can stay.
Yeah, obviously, it looks like the majority of our open enrolls, even in or out, are all younger kids. So it makes sense that a lot of those, whether, wherever you choose to go to, in or out, is a lot of, because of work or transportation issues, because it looks like, you know, high school is just a, you know, a couple of each, so.
And if you look at the portfolio of what New Richmond School District is right now, and I'm here to say that New Richmond's an excellent school district. They have an increasing enrollment that most do not based on their physical location. And I think it has got a great deal with the logistics of where they're located in regards to people that live east of them going to work and working probably in Stillwater or the cities. And I don't drive to the cities every day for work, but from here to the cities is probably an hour. From New Richmond to the cities, if you hit the lights right at certain spots, I imagine you probably get it done in 35 or 40. So I think there's folks that are doing that. And it doesn't make sense to come this way. If you're living on that outside of a district.
Yeah, I would assume like a lot of work in Woodbury, Hudson, and New Richmond is right there. You're living down by that area.
And certainly, there could be students here who are open and rolling out that have displeasure with the level of education they've received here too. I just don't have the information like that.
Did we finish making the vote?
Nope, we're just still in the discussion phase. So if anybody has any further discussion?
Nope. I just want to quit. I want her to get some sleep tonight, that's all.
Sure. Blame it on Gwen. We know, we know, as you're over there with your eyes half-open. Okay, so a motion by Steve, seconded by Gwen to approve the open enrollment for 2024-2025. All those in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nope. Motion carries. We'll approve the open enrollment. Little thing chalked off the list. Now it looks like Ryan's up for bus purchase and transportation software. Hello?
So we'll start with the bus purchase. This year, it's come up around $5,000, I think, since last year, which is much better. I think last year was around $35,000. And then Thomas said, I want to do a bid again because they don't have apples to apples. And I've talked to a couple of their districts and said Thomas has been quite, quite a bit higher. So they're actually looking to go to Bluebird now. And also in, I was gonna present this in April, so I got a price in April. It's gone up 7%, but Wisconsin Bus has held it. They said they'd hold it at the last rate. So we're saving 7% again.
7% in a month's time? Month's time?
Yep.
Wow.
It was a yearly rate increase. It just happened to be in-between.
Gotcha, okay.
This is the exact same bus we ordered last year, just the new one. Depending on when it goes into production, it'll be there 2025 or 2026.
Okay.
And the bus we ordered last year, did we just get that or?
No, actually, yeah, I'll kind of, I'll kind of chime in here. So what we're actually looking to do, so the bus that you guys authorized to purchase in '23-24 in this school year, consistently every month, Ryan's called and every month, it's been pushed back by two months. So the most recent one was that it wasn't gonna be here until August. So we discussed it and the, there's weird accounting things where if we were going to realize the purchase of this school bus that you authorized in last school year, there was some weird kind of wonky assigned fund balance things that were gonna have to happen. Now, because of the road incident that we had Now, because of the road incident that we had several months ago, it kind of went to a condition where we could essentially be getting two school buses for the price of one and a third. So what we are seeking to do is, and I, I guess I don't know if there needs to be a motion to push the 23, 24 school bus purchase to 24, 25. And then the other bus would also be purchased in next year, but that amount of what that cost is still a little to be determined because we haven't gotten the official confirmation from the insurance company on what the replacement value of that bus is going to be. We have a rough idea that it's going to be around $100,000, but we don't know the answer to that yet because Jim and, and Tricor are still fighting for us. So what it looks like potential picture is really we're not going to be a bus this year. We're going to be getting two next fiscal year, but we're only going to be paying for one that was already purchased this fiscal year. So that's perhaps is continue with the motion that you guys made for the bus that you purchased and expend $50,000 roughly to purchase the bus that you guys authorized us to spend $147,000 R and then just buy another bus next school year. Does that make sense? And that's what I would say that we should do. I don't know what we need to do from a motion standpoint. But that way we're spreading that expense out a little bit more and we're spending 50 this year, 150 next year, opposed to 200 in one year. Does that make sense? So if, I don't think you guys really have to do anything more. It's just kind of, hey, good news. We saved 100 grand.
Yeah, I think that would, from a logistics standpoint, is that the board would have to vote to purchase another bus and then you would just have to handle the accounting on that.
Sure.
And then as it would come up, if it needs approval to go ahead and ratify the spending on that, I think that would be the way to go.
What's the reason for the 50? Did you have to put something down?
No, there was a discrepancy. So apparently, and we didn't know this ahead of time, we just learned this last week. The $100,000 is what, more or less is what they want to settle on for the total value of the school bus. We were
That was what the other one was purchased for.
Correct. So we were, the, the EMC guidelines for school buses, and actually if you go to the, the quote or the estimate for our insurance, it kind of lays out a little bit more. So we were under the impression that we had full replacement value coverage. Well, their rule is full replacement coverage can only be on buses that are three years or newer. That bus is four years and it's not model year, it's purchase date. So that was the 21 model year, 21, 22 bus, but it was purchased in 2019, which pushes it outside of the three years. So we're just kind of, by matter of technicality, kind of getting, having a loss on that bus. Go ahead, Ryan.
There is a possibility that we could get it before July 1st because it is, it is coming to Wisconsin next week. So it's actually moving and there, and then the current, the next bus, they first told me it'd be 12 months. Now they're more like six to eight months. So the productions are catching up, which is kind of nice.
So we would be looking at hopefully getting this before the fiscal year ends. If not, it's just a little complicated accounting that we have to do, but the auditors are well aware of it. And it would all go just fine. And then the second bus would be around October-ish that we would be getting that.
Okay. So bottom line, it's all budgeted for, it's all accounted for. It's just a matter of the insurance claim and then how, what they're going to have to do with the accounting with that, so.
Correct.
Is there a motion to purchase said bus for $147,969?
I would make that motion.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Gwen, is there any discussion on purchasing the bus? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of purchasing the bus for $147,969 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion passed. We're buying a bus, maybe two. Moving on to Transfinder.
Yep. So we did some more research and there's some more hard numbers. And what I kind of found out is each of our vehicles will need to have a SAM-SAR, which is basically given an internet and GPS location. Whereas some of the other newer buses have, I guess other districts would have a, already have the GPS, internet on the bus. So it was a little more costly than I thought. So I, I really liked the idea, but I don't know now knowing it's going to be about $6,000 compared to like 3,000 if it's worth it yet.
Okay. Any, did you come up with any like safety concern issues of unauthorized people being able to track buses, anything like that?
I did hear some other districts saying, you know, when they had like an incident like this, one of the accident, parents would just start showing up because they can see exactly where the bus is at.
That was my next question.
Right. Another thing they did ask is like, how long were you stuck to it? He said it's just a year, year to year. So if we wanted to try it for a year, we could always say, eh, it's not working and we won't be done with it.
So annual cost or is that an annual with hardware, software?
That's everything together with hardware and software, everything together. The $9,083 is what it would go to. Currently what we're paying for our software right now is the $3,006.50. And I did, you know, one thing is we have 14 route buses, so only one of our spare buses would have the ability to go onto a route with this because it's up to 15 vehicles. So if we happen to have more than one spare, could throw it all off and they're like, where's my bus? Because it's not showing up on there. That was another kind of thing I thought about that could happen.
So do you think that the current recommendation would be to just kind of hold off at this point and?
I think so because I, I think we're working with our software in school, the Power School System, to get more up to date. And if we could take advantage of the, the tablet in the bus, it could do attendance and everything plus this, then maybe be worth it. And then if you have a tablet, you don't need the SAM-SAR GPS units. So it's not a whole lot more than that and we get a lot more options.
Okay.
But I don't think we, we, we're talking ID cards for all the students and we're just not there in the district.
Right.
Right now.
Okay. So no action really needs to be taken. Are we okay with just kind of putting this on hold for right now and having them look at something else next year?
Yeah, I would bring it back and.
Yeah, I think before I was on fully aboard, but now, you know, I did more research and I just don't think it's quite there yet.
Okay.
I would go with your opinion. If that's what you feel, I would agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Lonnie for device and display screen order. More money.
Always. Okay. 2024, 2025 school year, I'm looking to do a device refresh. Microsoft has been so kind as to deprecate Windows 10, which means it will no longer be supported after November 2025. Any Windows device that we have that is used in this app besides laptops will, will not support Windows 11. Will not get any security updates. It will not be supported by Microsoft. So I'm looking at replacing all staff devices. Currently we have 75 in inventory, looking to reduce that down to 50. 44 are the actual offices in all four buildings, plus 10 for the lunchrooms. Difference is they have Wi-Fi in the 10. The ones in the classroom or in the offices do not. As well as four additional desktops for the IT department and finance office to run our software on. In addition to that, classroom display technology, what you see is what we have in the classrooms. These are probably six years old right now. They are starting to drop off. In other words, we've had devices where ports have been broken, they've quit working altogether. Displays have gone blurry, lines showing up to where they're not usable in the classrooms. Currently we've had 135 of these. We barely have enough right now to maintain the classroom counts. If we lose one more, one classroom will no longer have a screen. We are looking to replace two buildings. 32 at the middle school, 28 at the high school, or I'm sorry, intermediate school, plus two per media center, which are actually larger displays, which are 86 inches for any meetings or presentations that are done.
Did you say two in each? I'm sorry, did you say two in each media center?
Say again.
Two in each media center?
Two in each media center. That'll share one with both any labs or anything or Makerspace or anything like that. So they won't actually have one in their room and they can be transported to a lunchroom. And so they'll have their own carts as well.
Okay.
Okay. Another thing about these, we did look at three different versions. We looked at more of these over the last year. We've looked at a BenQ display and a New Line display. This is basically obsolete. There's no functionality, functionality on its own without additional hardware. Both at BenQ and New Line, both are similar to a smart television. So you can actually use apps, incorporate that into Google Classroom, do everything on the board, no device interconnection between the two. So teacher would not have to bring your laptop to the front of the room. They can do it right here on the board in a secure way with login on the display. Another nice thing is they actually have an HEM out so you can link them together, hence the two per media center. To where you can, when I'm either side of the room, they're going to show the same thing. Another amazing functionality on the BenQ is we can actually broadcast messages across all boards. We tied into Informacast for emergency messaging. So if we ever have an emergency announcement, we can send these all out to all the other classrooms in the building. And it'll flash up on the screen like our IP speakers.
And we don't have that capability currently with these?
Not with these displays, no.
Okay.
Okay. Next thing, we are looking to replace our Chromebooks at the middle school and high school. As you well know, kids are very hard on their devices. Anywhere from poking holes in their batteries to going in their screens shut, as Sean's well aware of. Most of them come in, they're missing keyboard surrounds, puzzles, broken screens, keys are quit working, track pads are quitting to work. More in the high school than at the middle school. Currently, we do not have any spare parts. Our warranties are going up, so if a keyboard or track pad goes bad, we, we have to replace the unit or we won't have enough.
How is our insurance? So I think, isn't each kid, don't, doesn't each family have to pay 50 or 75 dollars or something for insurance?
It's not required. It's optional insurance. And I believe it's once per building.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And more often than not, we try to don't collect that money until they actually graduate, if I'm correct, or when they leave.
Well, it depends on the family.
Depends on the family.
And how does that get handled? Like, so when you, when they have to check their laptop in at the end of the year, is it checked and then like?
They paid at the beginning. If they haven't paid it, they have to pay it in order to be able to part with their.
Right. I mean, like, so if there's damage done to that laptop, then is that turned into our insurance claims then or?
This is actually in-house insurance. We don't actually go through an insurance company. If I, if I remember, if I'm correctly informed.
Oh, okay.
It's a pool of money that's collected.
Gotcha, okay.
And we pull money from it when we need it.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
But do you have a question? We have them, when students have damage, sometimes teachers will see it. They'll, they'll be sent down. And if they have insurance, then it's covered. If it's not, then they have to pay for some of the damage that they do. Sometimes there's accidents. I don't think that they have nothing to do with them and knock it out the desk. But we do check in at the end of the year, every single computer and we look through the middle school. What if, where they're missing keys or not, that's written down and any other damages or any other concerns. And then that's taken care of and then, so obviously the students are going to come and get a loaner for a while. We'll have to be more than.
Okay.
Okay. Next thing was the lab here at the middle school. We were trying to assess a way to share that lab in order to save some money between the three buildings that would need a lab. Currently, if we were to replace every unit with a Windows device, it was quoted out originally at about $1,200. Working with the Dell rep, we may get that lowered, but right now I'm working on getting Chromebooks. Chrome boxes, not Chromebooks, which is basically a Chromebook that just sits on a desk and still uses keyboard and mouse. There's no portability with it. Okay, it's like a terminal and it ties into Google and she'd still be able to use it like a regular desktop. Those are actually running at $492 apiece, $38 for a Google license and we can get those locally. And it's at probably longevity on these as far away in the, any Windows device we throw in there. Because they're currently at current versions, 10 years from the time of purchase or time of creation for Chrome OS.
So the, there's a couple of things. First, I, I do want to point out Lonnie's kind of guiding principle this whole entire time was not replacing stuff that's not used. So if it was a matter of replacing a desktop computer for a desk that doesn't exist or somebody that's not there, it really, he did go classroom by classroom, building by building to assess what the needs of those individuals are. So the bids that, the estimates and the quotes that you are seeing here are best bid. So we did go through a formal bid process for all of these. Some, the bid winner is connecting the vast majority of it is through BG.
We're TQ lease.
TQ lease, yeah. So the, we were even up until last Friday, we were getting $10,000 off competing offers on some of this stuff. So originally when we started this conversation, when it came specifically to the smart boards, the number was closer to 250. And where we're at right now is closer to 190 for those. Similarly, we discussed which buildings we're going to get the new Chromebooks first and as discussed, the elementary and the intermediate school, those kids are monitored when they're using them and they don't take them home. So they're just inherently in much better shape than the ones at the high school and the middle school. And what that'll also allow Lonnie to do is have a bunch of backups from the older devices from the high school and the middle school to use as replacement or loaner devices, should those be needed at the other two schools. So I think what you are looking at right here is an actual 100% good to go. Nope, you're fine. How are we going to pay for it? That's a topic of discussion because as you see right there, the total of $467,793.59 is a lot of money to absorb in any one fiscal year. So the answer of how we pay for this stuff is, well, we've leased it and that's what all schools in CSU 11 do. That's what everyone does. It's what we've personally done for the last, forever. We've usually had two separate leases out at any one time. Dell is who we primarily purchased the, the actual Chromebooks and the staff devices through. They have their own wing. It's called Dell Financial. They have very good, they have actually the best rates that we saw and all the companies that put in proposals for us. And then the second company that we would be leasing through would ultimately be for you guys to decide as well. But the point being, we are almost done paying off the last lease. So it would be a wash as far as budgetary needs are concerned. If we continue and roll forward these leases. So I don't have Becky's just, this, this screen right here. This really equates to three different options for the purchasing of the staff devices and the student Chromebooks. And that's all that is included in this proposal that we would finance through Dell Financial. The way that it kind of breaks down is the three-year mark, the interest, which is, I know what you guys are curious of. The interest percentage, if we did the three-year, which is historically what we've done, they have three-year warranties. We're buying five-year warranties to extend our life a little bit more. If we draw it out to four years, if we drew it out to five years, it would be 13% total interest. So that's for staff and student devices. My personal recommendation would be three years at 7% is what we can afford and what I would strongly recommend. If we start talking about the words, we actually ended up having a total of three different companies that were kind of bidding, so to speak, on getting our business. A random one, and then a company called Vantage. These all include a $1 buyout, which is somewhat unique. You can get better terms and less principal payment by not doing it and doing what do they have at actual cash value of those devices? You can get better terms and less principal payment by not doing it and doing, what do they have, an actual cash value of those devices? But again, because they're kids using them, that's a pretty big gamble to make. So the one-dollar buyout option is really the, kind of the way to go. So we did have to, or the four and five-year rate options and, I don't even know what they're called. But anyways, TEQ lease was the only one who did a full three-year, four-year and five-year option. If you went with those at three years, it'd be nine percent, four years, twelve percent, five years, sixteen percent. Hunting year option, because that's all they offer. Theirs came in at twelve percent for three years. The Vantage one-dollar buyout one would be seven percent three. They did not bid a four-year and then at five years it would be fourteen percent. So the seven, seven, seems to be where we're getting the most bang for our buck on doing all these. So Becky, could you go back to the totals slide? So a recommendation is to lease the classroom, staff desktop devices and the student Chromebooks and then just the Chromebooks. That's plenty within Lonnie's budget.
And this fits with the two thousand seventeen referendum dollars where there were five hundred thousand dollars of the one point nine million devoted specifically to technology. Five hundred thousand's that magic number, four sixty-seven's what you see here. And that's where the money would be coming from.
So really if we leased these options, it would be freeing up Lonnie's money for a lot of the other infrastructure and network needs that the district has.
Now, in our conversations in the, in the technology, we talked about next year, right?
Yep.
So you're going to put displays in the other buildings.
Well, we've done, we've done really two different things. You've got display screens. We're ordering half of the display screens for this upcoming year, then the other half for the following year. And we chose intermediate and middle school because there's no referendum work presently ongoing there. We don't want to drop stuff into the elementary and high school right now because there's too much going on. And then the other piece of that is devices. Right now we're looking at middle and high school devices and then right behind that are the intermediate school and elementary school. Maybe, we think we might be able to get another year out of them. And I think the big factor is, and we've already made reference to it, they don't go home with the kids. The high school devices do and they take a beating. As a result, elementary and intermediate don't really leave the classroom and middle are checked out. So that's the big difference. So the devices split into two different years and the screens split into two different years to try and parse up that total cost.
Right. So for the rest of the board members, you're going to see a similar number next year minus staff devices?
Yes.
And potentially if Lonnie decides that the student devices are still in good shape, that might be, that camp might be kicked down another year. Nope.
There's no staff, staff devices because this is year one on this device. So this has got a couple of years, the device that I have here.
That you guys all have. Those, and those were purchased via grant.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So there will.
Those are not up. Student devices for elementary, intermediate are up, screens are up.
Correct.
Okay. So there's a lot there to take in. So what is it that we need to motion on? Because we can get them all.
Well, you need to make individually or are we taking them?
I, my contention would be the motion you need to make is for Lonnie to have permission to purchase the big screen TVs for the intermediate and middle and for devices for the high school in the middle and then the labs and then the desktop versions, what you see on the screen.
So I think it's, the motion is whether you're going to purchase outright. Purchase is the first portion. Purchase outright is the second or purchase via lease and which specific lease.
Okay. And I would follow your recommendation was your question.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, so the options would be a one-time four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar charge.
With a three-year lease is what we're looking at.
Or the other, the three-year lease is what, sixty, about sixty-nine?
Yeah, the, the three-year lease total as far as principal payment is concerned, if we leased the staff devices, the student devices and the screens, so basically everything but the lab Chrome boxes. You'd be looking at a hundred and sixty-three-ish thousand dollars a year for three years. And that, the financial one is one where we have actually entered into defeesence most years. So we have bought our way out of those early, whenever available. And I think that's probably, that's likely barring any sort of other large purchases in the technology sector. That's what we would aim to do with any potential budget surplus that comes out of us doing. Our leases is defeating that.
And so you reckon, your recommendation would be to lease.
Correct.
Except for.
Except for those lab, those Chromeboxes, correct.
Yep.
Correct. So my recommendation, spell it out one more time so that I'm clear, would be to lease using Vantage one-dollar buyout at three-year terms. The smartboard purchases and then lease through Dell Financial Services on a three-year term for the staff and student devices, so the desktop devices and the staff, and the student Chromebooks. And then pay full cash value for the lab Chrome boxes. It gets terribly confusing when you start talking about Chrome and.
Yeah. I would make that motion that we follow that plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Is this, I don't know, maybe I'm spent, sick of spending money tonight.
Yeah.
But again, I'm questioning our overall process of spending money of, is this an area where we?
This is stuff we do all the time.
I know, it's, it's business and this, again, I, I have no problem. I just kind of wondering, when we have technology, the five hundred thousand you said for our one point nine million dollar two thousand seventeen referendum, are we spending our money elsewhere where this is what, this is the down and dirty of school? You know, I've just, again, it just makes me question on my, on my sports turf football field, if we're, again, we're still spending a half a million, just under a half a million dollars on things I think that our teachers need to teach and our kids need to learn.
That number's going to be split over the three years though.
I get it.
We've been doing technology purchases as long as I've been here, twenty years. This is the price of doing business. If we got the technology committee meeting together next week and said, we're not doing display screens, I think all the building principals and myself would be packing their bags. This is, this is their lifeblood.
They couldn't, but, but again, I'm not, I'm not saying that we're not going to have display screens, Dr. Durf. What I'm telling you is, is there a different way to pay for it?
Well, you can either buy them, you can buy them or you can lease them.
So you can question my process and why I'm asking for, if we're spending our money in the correct places at the correct times? I'm asking about the process, not about if our, if our teachers need this to teach.
The, the process, we've engaged on this in regards to financing this and Steve's been a part of that process as have the building principals. We've been talking about this for almost two years.
Yeah.
And the process is we've got a cycle of three or four years for every single device and we're trying to get a fifth year out of the elementary and intermediate. There's a process that's been very well laid out. We've been in constant communication. Lonnie's the shortstop of that committee, so to speak, in regards to these devices dropping off and no longer being useful. We've got a high school that's got all sorts of devices that are, that are not useful. We can do this because we've got a line item in the budget for doing this. We also can do an athletic facility because we have a means in our, in our budget to be able to do that as well. We can do both.
And I, I think to Lonnie's credit, he didn't want to change staff devices this year. That was, was, what, November, maybe November, December was, yeah, you're not going to be able to service these staff devices. And so I, I think the, the process and the, the committee has really helped to kind of narrow these down. Because again, the BenQ smartboards, they're not the top of the line. They're not the bells and whistles, but they're also, they're right in the middle of the road. So I think that committee has done a really wonderful job in recommending the, the devices that we need truly.
And if that were just part of every classroom, which I kind of expect it is nowadays, I, I guess that's, that's what I'm wondering is if, are we one point six million dollars under budget because some of this stuff isn't being replaced so that we?
Well, I think Lonnie would be the best served to answer that. I've asked, I think, every single meeting for the better part of two years, where are we at on these big screen TVs? Are they still serviceable? Are they still working? Well, they're starting to drop off. And then you hear from Gretta McCarty and Annie Brayden who are working in the libraries and they chime in, well, we got a little more than we did last time. They're starting to drop off and bigger numbers drop off, meaning they're no longer useful, they can't be used. And the, the high school, we always knew that that was going to be a four-year process and done because those devices travel and owners take a beating. So we, we could see it coming for a while and we've made plans to address it coming for a while. And our, literally the spreadsheet, I have the occasion to put it up on the screen. It literally goes in the left side of the screen to the right side of the screen and I think it's almost into the two thousand thirties. This is a constant line item cycle that's going to go on for infinity until technology and classrooms is no longer needed. It's either a three-year cycle, a four-year cycle, a five-year cycle. It's literally color-coded. I mean, they've all seen it, Steve's seen it, Lonnie and I helped create, John. So there's a process and then some for addressing it. It's always going to be a three, four, five hundred thousand dollar price tag, no matter the year.
Yeah, each and every year.
It's always going to be.
I get it.
Unless you stop, if you stop doing devices in a particular building, then that price tag will drop.
I will also say that statically, the price does not, seemingly it's inflation does not hit technology like it does everything else because the, the amounts is, when we look at that spreadsheet and what the estimated cost will be, it's been pretty damn close, dang close to exactly right.
I get, I wanted to kind of clarify something in the conversation that I hear just as facilitating this is that, I guess what I'm hearing from Joe and maybe your question and then what I'm hearing is an answer isn't, isn't quite meshing up in my mind. So in an effort to make sure that we have the answers that you're looking for, when you said like, we're one point six million dollars under budget, exactly which, like, which budget are you referring to? Like the referendum budget?
Yes.
So we can't use that referendum money for devices? So there's nothing in that referendum that was put on there? We can only spend from the referendum what was put in that wording and in nowhere do I believe was technology?
No, it has to be the for, for the purpose of question. Anything that follows that phrase is what you can use it for.
So I guess that's when you're saying like, are we spending our money in the correct place? Is that's what I'm hearing you ask, is that we can't co-mingle those funds? So you questioning like, are we spending that one point six million dollars putting it towards the athletic facility versus putting it towards this? We, we just simply can't in the world of school finance, we just simply can't. Is that more of an accurate?
That was a perfect answer, sure.
Okay, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that the answers, the question and the answer meshed up and what I heard the question.
Yeah, I'm not complaining about the costs. I get we have it. I just want to know, is there a way?
Well, I think that there are other community members that have that same question. Like if we're that far under budget, why are we not putting it towards this instead of talking about it coming out of our technology money on that recurring referendum? But simply we just can't. So I think it was a great question that if other people have the same question, that, that's exactly why we can't do this. So it'll come out of our recurring referendum budget and that will be matched and it's line item budgeted for and we can do both.
May I apologize for misunderstanding your question, Joe, and confusing it more with my answer. I think we're in a better spot now.
We're good.
Fantastic.
I'm still the first.
You're still what?
The first, I make the motion.
I'll second.
I'm almost hesitant to ask, but is there any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All of those in favor of purchasing the lab Chromeboxes, leasing the student Chromebooks, the staff desktop devices in the classroom, displays for the four hundred and sixty-seven seven ninety-three fifty-nine, please signify by saying aye.
I'm a three-year lease.
No!
Out of three-year lease, yeah.
Yeah, three-year, yeah.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
I didn't share with you the one lease option that was six years and thirty-seven percent.
Thanks for not sharing that, John.
And it was a.
All right.
Thank you.
Cool. We're leasing some stuff, we're buying some stuff, we're going to have some technology. Thanks, Lonnie. Okay, we have a change, just a certified staff handbook in retirement language.
Yes, when, when you have a change this late in the game, it's typically because extraordinary circumstances have occurred or someone's asked a really good question and a really good question was asked and we're seeking to address it. So if you are a, I'll read the red language to you. In the event that an employee is age sixty-five, so you're sixty-five and you're employed by the school district of Amory, at the time of retirement, you've turned your letter and you want to retire and is entitled to a sick bank payment. So this person has two hundred and ninety-something days and they're entitled to receive payment for those days. Or the employee turns age sixty-five after retirement with a sick bank payment, with sick bank payments remaining, the employee's sick bank balance will be covered, will be converted to a 403B severance contribution not to exceed, that's IRS language. Any remaining amount beyond the IRS limit will be paid out in taxable cash through payroll. Here is the idea. So if this person is two hundred and ninety days and they're being paid out at a hundred and thirty dollars per day.
Nice.
A hundred and thirty on this present language.
Okay.
At two hundred and ninety days, those two, that's a big number. You're looking at thirty, forty thousand dollars. If you pay that to them in cash through payroll, it's not only taxable, it will also perhaps change their tax bracket and that could create problems. If you put it into a 403B, they can access it however they see fit and it is a tax-sheltered annuity, which will play much better for them in regards to taxation. That's the idea behind this change. Right now there's no language that speaks to it.
Okay, I do have a question about that though. So currently it is a hundred and thirty dollars per day. Is, is, are we changing this because this, this can't take effect for this school year? It has to be next school year and we decided to, to take that number down to ninety, right?
No, that number's at a hundred.
A hu, oh yes, a hundred, sorry. So it would be a hundred, not a hundred and thirty dollars, right?
The hundred becomes active on July one and this person's going to receive their payments after July one. They don't start now.
Right, so it would be a hundred dollars.
Hundred per, yes.
Not a hundred and thirty, okay. I just want to make sure because I want to make, because that would be just for this year, it would be the hundred and thirty, but.
Correct.
Okay.
Josh, go ahead.
All right.
What if they're already contributing to the 403B and they would exceed their yearly max that you could?
That's the language that you say there, the I R C, blah, 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 blah. Any amount after that, you're going to get paid taxable. Because there's a cap, Josh is referencing, there's a cap that the federal government says you cannot contribute any more than X.
With this.
Yes.
Yes.
You're the smartest person in the room on this one.
Now, with this language, as a retiree, they could then say, you know what, I'm going to retire. I'm going to hold back and not contribute to my 403B, maybe their last year before they know they're going to retire. And then they would open up and have their whole 403B available to take a bigger hunk of it. Not knowing it, we could do the bulk and I'm, not me, somebody would work with the retiree to know what they're at on their IRS maximum. You don't want to max anybody out. The remainder then is paid through payroll where taxes are taken out. So it's really a better situation. Also, a 403B's IRS codes and limits have, are a little more lenient when you hit sixty-five and over. So they would have a lot more grace than you do after you're sixty-five.
This, this costs nothing for the school district and it helps our teachers if they want to fall into this.
True, true, true.
Further retirement, go.
Let's do it.
Do I have a motion to accept the additional language into the certified staff handbook?
I'll make the motion.
Joe, is there a second? Steve, is there any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of amending the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school certified staff handbook, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, signify by saying nope. Motion pass. All right, moving on, we're almost done. Hang on, people. Donations to the district.
Nope.
Best part of the night. No, no, that's right. Resolution authorizing litigation against social media companies.
I was contacted approximately four to six months ago by Weld Riley asking us if we wanted to join a class action lawsuit against social media companies. It's a lawsuit that's not just Wisconsin. It looks very similar to the lawsuit that we entered into in regards to vape settlement. And what it states, and I'm not going to read the bullet points, but I'm going to read the whereas statements, which shouldn't take long. It says, whereas the Surgeon General of the United States Public Health Service has issued an advisory on social media and youth mental health. Whereas the Surgeon General of the United States Public Health Service has further concluded that there's the evidence in regards to the effects on mental health. Whereas the Surgeon General of the United States Public Health Service has specifically urged that it is urgent that we take action. Whereas it has been reported that students, more now than ever, were glued to their cell phones during class. Whereas it has been reported that a growing number of educators find themselves on the front lines of fighting to change how students use social media and there has been a push for more schools to develop programs to help. for more schools to develop programs to help educate students on the dangers of social media. Whereas, and this is where you enter into the, the district's name, has and continues to experience significant problems with student use of social media, which use, among other things, has created substantial and ongoing interruption of and disturbance of the educational mission, has resulted in division, diversion of substantial resources in an attempt to abate and prevent such use, and its results, and its, and its results, resultant harms, poses a significant risk to the health and well-being of its students, and whereas is a leader, whereas is a leader in education excellence whose faculty and administrators care deeply about the education and well-being of its students, and which is committed to leading and not following. And then there's the language there at the bottom. I spent 13 years fighting social media at, at the high school. I remember the days where I actually found the physical address and phone number for every social media giant, and put it on one page, and every time a parent called or a kid came in, I gave them a piece of paper and said, contact them, because I don't see how it was our issue, but it is our issue. It's brought into school every single solitary day, and I'm not just saying at the high school, I'm saying all four buildings. So it's, it's, I would contend it's a pretty sizable issue. If you want to hear from the building principals, they certainly could share, and Brad, they can certainly share with you how they feel about it. Or if you have questions or comments, go ahead.
And I can say that the, the last class action that we were against was the vaping, and to date, we've received half of what we were entitled to. So we were total, entitled to just shy of about 25,000. We've received about 12,000 to date, which we've used as purchasing vape detectors and actually using that money for the opposite of what the problem is.
Yeah, so, and I think that there's been some talk of putting in some, maybe like, cessation programs and counseling and things like that, too, of the vaping. What would be the, what would we do with the money that we get from social media? Is there ideas about that?
I don't know what the amount would be, but my hunch is we would use it entirely on the emotional health of kids. I would contend, middle and high school kids are getting wiped out by social media, and wiped out, meaning it is very destructive of who their identity is and who their being is. And I would imagine it's the constant incessant barrage of negativity is probably not good for the psyche of any person, let alone a middle and high school kid. And I'm not here to discount the ails of intermediate and elementary, it's probably not as prevalent there.
We recently, you know, just brought in, as a doctor patch in, to produce a community parent night, we've done Screenagers a couple of years ago, which really did a nice job of shedding light to parents about some of the dangers of, of excessive screen time. Those would be the other types of things that probably be things to educate community and the parents about what's going on.
And I would say the intermediate school, our guidance counselors teach a lesson on internet safety, right? Looking out for predators, what do you look for, what are safe parameters when you reach out to a parent or guardian? So really educating them on, maybe before they get to use it, but I will say, a, a large number of students in fourth and fifth grade have their own personal cellphones.
Yeah, it's starting to trickle down, for sure. And then not only is it cellphone usage, but obviously then, social media just on laptops at home, or via Xboxes, PlayStations, those kind of things, it's all social media platforms in one form or another, and we're starting to see that earlier and earlier, so. Is there a motion to enter into the litigation against the social media companies?
I'll make that motion.
Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Dale, is there any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of entering into this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nope. Motion passed. All right, now we get to go on to the best part of the night, for donations to the district.
Okay, donations to the district. We have a thank you to Luke Wickkopf in Amory Hospital and Clinic for donating 400 Norway spruce trees for students and staff at Lean Elementary School. A thank you to Eric Wycheck in the Polk County Land and Water Resources Department for donating balsam trees to our sixth graders. Thank you to Jeddah Electric for donating 28 sets of safety eyeglasses for the middle school tech ed program, classroom, sorry.
Can I say one thing? I was the one to include Tanner Ian Rojo, which happens to be the, part of the Jeddah family, but he, it was Tanner that wrote, he saw his mom writing a grant.
He did.
And so he decided he was gonna write his own grant to his dad, and then his dad honored him.
The best part was, he was sitting by my husband when my husband got it, and he looked at Tanner, and he's like, why didn't you just ask me? But it was very formal, he emailed it to Mr. Benson, so-
I like the process.
Yeah.
It's a learning process.
I like the process. That's all on the up and up, I like that, that's legit.
He now knows, maybe he could ask for other things via email, maybe.
Well, maybe we need to get him into that education about the online stuff.
So you make a motion to-
Is there a motion to accept the donations to the district?
I'll make a motion, make accept the donations to the district with many thanks.
Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Gwen, any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the donations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. We will accept the donations to the district with many thanks, and they deserve another round of applause. And now, on to personnel action.
Personnel items, we have new employment and extracurricular contracts for Rachel Porter, eighth grade English, Olivia Pedersen, seventh grade assistant volleyball coach, Destiny DeCosmo, clubhouse assistant teacher, a reassignment in the middle school from school nutrition to office para-educator, that's Julia White, resignations from Madison Bornstadt, her school psychologist, Andrew Egert, bus driver, Gwen Otto, matasori teacher, Mackenzie Pelkey, speech and language pathologist, Tracy Perkins in school nutrition, and at retirement for Twyla Sickink, and the, as the director of personnel.
I've never seen her move that fast.
I saw, I know it was her.
She slammed the doors.
Keeps herself in, she slams, it was bad.
I'm putting her on the agenda next month.
Until she sits through it.
Oh, my goodness.
I'll make a motion, we accept the personnel changes.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Dale, is there discussion on personnel action? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the personnel action as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nope. Motion passes, personnel action is approved. Is there any reason, oh, is there community comments? Anybody?
It's kind of early, would you like to say?
Not that I don't see anybody left here, anybody hiding on the media tonight? No community comments? Any reason to go into closed session tonight that anybody has questions? Nope?